Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022. And this regular meeting in the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall 1123 West Lake Street in Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding, also President and Counselors Kate McAllister, Deb Rule, Joel Espiro, Jason Walker, and Justin Dick. Counselor Andy Groot is absent this evening. Will everyone please rise for the pledges?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the mother for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any announcements from council?
Yeah. I just want to thank Public Works and the Crows and our Police Department for all the snow removal and the amazing jobs that you have done. I really appreciate it. Councilman Groot also called me and said, please to send his thank yous and what an amazing job you've done. So good job, staff. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of announcements I'd like to make. First of all, I want to start off by a shout out and a wonderful thank you to the Kinder Haven Organization for a wonderful festival of trees that they threw this weekend. For those of you that don't know, there was a piece of legislation that came through very well intentioned, but ended up basically putting Kinder Haven in a position where they couldn't operate anymore. They were able to get with Jack and Mary Jo Ambrosiani and the Bonner Homeless, Bonner County Homeless Task Force and join forces to put those homes to good use for homelessness in our community as well. So I want to thank everybody that went out to the festival of trees, donated, volunteered. And then a good piece of news I got right before I was leaving the restaurant, I ran into Rob Hert. And he said that the state of Idaho through the Idaho Housing and Financing Association was just awarded $1.5 million for their affordable housing project over at Culvers Crossing today. So he wanted me to make sure that we mentioned that. So it's fantastic and a great start to the affordability conversation in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. All right. Any announcements from staff?
Just quickly, Mr. Mayor, thank you again, reiterating Counselor McAllister's comments. But thank you to our citizens for helping us with compliance with our newly adopted snow policy and parking on the even sides of the street. And I think our crews have done a fantastic job in getting removal done, streets cleared. It helps us with street widening. Again, when we're able to get to that side of the street. And for those who are not familiar with the changes or wondering what our policy is around and our plans around snow removal and management, it's on the front page of our website. We got it updated today with the new policy. So that is on there. And a reminder again that in the winter season, we do regularly do updates on what we're doing around snow removal and management. We found that primarily through our Facebook page, we reached the most people and we're kind of on the fly trying to get those out regularly. So we were publishing those updates over the last few weeks and snow is in our forecast again. And so when that's happening, what it is that we're doing and what people can expect, we do have those updates on our Facebook page. We share them out on our city Facebook page as well as Police Department page. So if you're following either one, you'll see those updates.
Can we share them out on the chambers?
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would entertain a motion from council to move Agenda Item 7E forward in the agenda following 6E, so it would appear right before Old Business. And the reason is we have a subject matter expert here in Dan Haley, who's with us in the audience. And I think his his knowledge will be invaluable in that discussion. And he has to leave before seven o'clock. So I would appreciate the council's support there.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister. Yes. Counselor Rule. Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the first item today is as is always, the public forum portion of the meeting, which allows the public the opportunity to address myself and city council on items that are not on the agenda or on any item that's on the consent calendar. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. And we will reopen the public forum if you did not have an opportunity to speak within that and a lot of timeframe. So those here in chambers who wish to speak will need to complete a sign up form, which is located by the front door there on the table. You'll need to fill it out, hand it to the clerk up here in the front right of the room. If you're on Zoom and wish to speak, I will ask for public comment and you may raise your hand at that time. And the clerk will unmute you. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual organization or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Please do not direct any questions to council or staff, and please do not approach the dials. Please note that during the public forum, council may not hear or take testimony on any planning or zoning matter that is before the city or is known to be likely, known to be a likely application. Such testimony is allowed only during the public hearing. Issues regarding the performance of city employees constitute matters that must be discussed only in executive session and are not appropriate during the public forum portion of the meeting. Matters that have been previously heard and decided by the council may be determined to be inappropriate for public forum. Citizens may use this time to request that items be placed on a future agenda for further discussion. Those in attendance are not to disrupt this meeting or the business at hand that is being taken up by the council. Disruptive behavior includes clapping, disruptive noise, and comments or exclamations from the audience. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum portion of the meeting this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that concludes the public forum portion of the meeting. So next we have the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $400,406.94 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain the motion that the consent calendar be approved.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister. Yes. Counselor Rule. Yes. Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Motion passes. So now we will have an update on the required remediation and redevelopment of the former Jocelyn Poll Yard. I will now yield the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to have representatives from ERM present tonight on their remediation plan and the testing that they have done to date. But we also have Steve Gill in attendance tonight from DEQ. And I thought it might be helpful to first start by having DEQ come up and Steve, Steve representing DEQ, kind of give some context to the Jocelyn site and the cleanup and the structure of that and DEQ's role. Because this isn't a subject we have talked about for some time. It hasn't come before council. So I thought it would be a good refresher to kind of set the context for the council and the public. So Steve, thank you for graciously agreeing to do this on the fly. I caught him tonight when he came in. And our representatives from ERM are also aware that Steve is going to set some context. So.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. I didn't expect to speak tonight. But I know this, this project very well. I mean, I was born and raised in Sandpoint, played in the poll yard as a kid. So I have friends at Lincoln School. I went to Washington. But anyway, I've worked with Idaho Department Environmental Quality now for the last 17 years. And this is one of the projects I followed. I managed the McFarland side of the poll yards. And then there's also the Jocelyn. Two different mechanisms, but a quick history. 1917, it was the Sandpoint Wood Treaters. It went basically from the Great Northern Tracks at that time. Where the bus yard is, where Alpine Lumber used to be, all the way to where you're seeing it today. And it was a large site. 1985, Sandpoint is expanding. Division Street, they're going from 40 foot right of way on each side to 60 foot to accommodate sidewalks on one side, bike pass on the other. When they crossed the tracks, the Burlington or the Santa Fe Track, and they went across there where Alpine Lumber was, they were trenching there, had a trench down there. And there were five employees with the city of Sandpoint who were working there. Black Creosote soil was encountered and the fumes overwhelmed them. And for the people that were working for the city, Sandpoint ended up going to the hospital. Just nobody, nobody got hurt long term. There was an operator of one of the machines went on for quite a bit with the city and stuff. You guys can look at that history. That prompted the Environmental Protection Agency to come in, look at the site. They did an initial assessment in 1986 under what EPA calls their Start to Program, which is sort of a pre-superfund look where they bring in EPA contractors and look at the site. That brought additional work where the state of Idaho was working with the city of Sandpoint. And there's many letters, our files are huge on this, the amount of correspondence we have with the city and and the organizations. In 1990s, there was another Start to Analysis, a lot more in depth. They looked at that and they decided that there was going to have to be some type of cleanup. The owners of the McFarland Poll Yard worked with the state of Idaho and we looked at adopting, the state of Illinois had a voluntary cleaner program and we adopted that program. And that is part of our statutes. And so it allows an operator such as McFarland, at the time, they were still treating the poles with, well, by then it was Penta, earlier treatment was with Creosote. So different constituents, different sort of chemicals all used for treating posts and poles. That led to McFarland rolling into the VCP program in 2002 officially. There were cleanups that started to be accomplished. So going back to the mid 90s and continuing into the early 2000s on the McFarland property. The Jocelyn property was also assessed at the same time. They initially hired the same contractor that McFarland did, which was a company called Mall Foster Longy out of Seattle. A lot of work was done, a lot of quantification. There was good, good motion going forward, but Jocelyn's legal counsel from Chicago wanted to have the Jocelyn property go under what's a consent decree. So a consent decree under the state of Idaho rules is sort of our most onerous type of legal mechanism where there's actually both the state and Jocelyn have time limits on how things are done and back and forth. And it's all managed. And if if Jocelyn feels that we're not being responsive, they can go to a judge, we can go to a judge. And so it's it's a much more legal compared to the voluntary cleaner program. Fast forward to about 2018, 2019, we started to see changes in how Jocelyn itself was no longer Jocelyn, but it was purchased by a company called Danaher. McFarland is now owned by a company called Stella Jones. So we have these two different entities that are now owning them, but they're still continuing the cleanup and everything that's been going forward. The McFarland property, as you know, everything, it was on division. Housing on part, a little bit of it, not much housing on over wood treatment. But then there's, you know, the, there's dentist office and things like that. So there is some, and today there's no treatment on either site. So finally, ERM came in and they did a much more robust assessment of the site starting 2018, 2019, 2020, continuing up until maybe even early this year. Chris, Chris Berg and I have been working on these projects for a long time. They've now proposed to do a cleanup, which they'll cover. And this, from the state's perspective, we're looking at this as sort of a initially, we're hoping that this is a remedy that may be a solution using trees and tree wells and what's called a permeable reactive barrier. And when we think of wood treating chemicals in the soils, Sandpoint has very tight soils. We all know that. Lots of clay, lots of silt, all based from the old Lakemusula floods. So the permeable reactive barriers will, will, will work. They've worked across the nation. We're looking at that. At the same time, this is being proposed by ERM and they're going forward with this mechanism. We're going to look at this, make sure that this pilot kind of really works. They're also working with, so Danaher, Jocelyn is now working with Stella Jones, McFarland. And they're trying to come up with a much more comprehensive cleanup on the remaining McFarland property and the Jocelyn property together. The whole idea is to make sure that it it's, we see some type of remedy. These chemicals want to go deep in the ground. They're called Dean apples and they do degrade. There's microbes in the ground. And so that's more of the technical side and it gets kind of for a better idea, for a better picture, think of, we're going to dig, they're, they're proposing to dig holes in the ground and put, put a carb substrate that is really the easiest thing I could put an analogy to is molasses. And then these bugs in the soil eat the molasses and then they eat the chemical. So that's what they're proposing now. We're going to see some more work with the McFarland property. They're doing their assessment. They've been out there the last 10 days. If you guys have noticed a lot of activity on the center portion behind Lighthouse. They will come up with a new plan that's going to be, we don't know what it's going to be for sure, but that will have a 30 day public comment period coming up. The McFarland property, you know, there was, we've had comments on that going on forward. And we finally got to the point where we think that it's worth trying this mechanism and we'll see what goes on. From a state's perspective, we're also working with both the owners and they, we do have some additional cleanup money that's available from EPA through the infrastructure law and from the the recent Inflation Reduction Act, the RA Act, both of those have given EPA a lot more money that is available that may bring some additional cleanup mechanisms and stuff. But this is really something that the city of Sandpoint, you as the mayor and the counselors administrator, working with these, these folks will really help. And it helps us from a state perspective because we get, we get input from citizens all the time. I mean, Water Keepers has been very active on this property and, and then now with Jennifer Exum. Yes. So we're, we're working on that. But anytime you can give us more input, we so appreciate it because it helps us focus on what you guys would like to see with this property, the eventual reuse revitalization of this property is really the thing that is important within the context of the cost. I mean, to really, a huge robust cleanup of this type of site would be in over, over a hundred million dollars and quickly. And I don't even know where we could take some of these soils. Sometimes anymore, we're having more and more issues on different types of materials where we can't even transport them to another place. We have to dispose of them on site or we can use soil incinerators and that just gets to be a public relations nightmare to have a soil incinerator on site. So, but anyway, we're just here for it. That's all I had. I it's hard for me to ever be short because this, this is a long-term project. But I'm available. You've got my emails anytime you have questions and I'm in town all the time because I'm working on the Ponder Bay Trail thing with the city of Ponder Bay.
All right. Hey, Steve, I really appreciate you being here. Can I ask you some questions?
Sure.
Okay. First of all, can you tell us what the, and maybe this is a better question for ERM, but can you give us a sense of what that timeframe is for the consent decree?
There's no timeframe on it. Well,
Vote's open ended.
I wouldn't say that. Most, all legal documentations that we work on as an agency, like our Uniform and Environmental Covenants have about a 30 year time period, which we have to revisit, but we're not to that point with this consent decree. Cause it was in the mid, well, 2000, I don't have the exact date. I think 2012 was the consent decree.
Yes, the supplemental consent.
So as far as that ever timing out, we wouldn't look at it, or the Attorney General's Office wouldn't look at saying, hey, we really need to get something going or, you know, we've got us, we've got to push to it. So, but technically a consent decree just stays open, but I don't think anything ever stays open in perpetuity. So.
Okay. Thank you. And then you said that is it, am I hearing you right? That Penta is the primary chemical that's the primary problematic chemical or there's?
Well, no, there's both Penta and then
Creosote.
And Creosote. So I mean, you've got these different type of constituents. They use both methodologies. Creosote was real popular for going way back, 1917, the pits they dug initially where Alpine Lumber was, those pits were just Creosote. And then they went over into Penta. I think most Penta up here probably was maybe the early 60s, maybe late 50s. And you started to see just different methods.
Okay. And you said that these chemicals degrade over time, but I imagine we're talking, you know, hundreds or thousands of years.
Right, right. As far as naturally in the soils. And so the soils that are in the ground, you know, and they want to go deep. So they keep going down into the soils. Clay, they move much slower than they would. If it was Rathronperiographer, it moves faster, that stuff. And, and which we don't have any major issues over the Rathronperiographer. But with, with Penta, we don't, but Spokane does, the bunker seaprop issue they have in the Hilliard areas, yeah, something that both Jennifer and I know about. But anyway.
Okay. And I know that there's been some reports, I believe, for the Water Keepers were concerned about infiltration from pollution from that site drifting off into Sand Creek watershed.
Right.
Have you verified that? Or do you have any data to either support that or refuse?
ERM did an extensive study following, you know, they put a bunch of new wells, both along Boyer, along the right of way. They put them on your new Sixth Street where the apartments are. And then they continued going right down towards Sand Creek. In the latest report that was dated in September, is it September 26th, Chris?
That was when the last sampling event was conducted. Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. So that they do that on a, are you doing that on a semi-annual or annual basis now?
That's correct. It's twice a year.
Yeah, twice a year. So, and so does McFarland. So we have that data and we've been watching it. And to go back, we can look at, there's monitoring well seven that the EPA actually put in in I think 86. It's still sitting there across from the Jocelyn. It's kind of, it should be replaced and we tell EPA they should replace it. We're not getting, but I mean, it's there and there's data there that if we look at the data from the Boyer, the recent Boyer wells and the data that's in that well, it goes back to 85, we didn't see any real differences that were alarming. Clays, clay particles, 90% of a clay particle wants, it adheres to the liquid. So, so much of that just stays with those clay particles. And that's where the idea of coming up with a more porous media, using these carb substrates for a better word, to try to get this degradation process to increase the amount of bugs and to see them going sooner. And then with the trees, I think it's, it's worth seeing what's going to happen. And so the state did go ahead and that was done through the state office and came up out of Seth in our office. So he's signed the letter. I didn't sign it.
And that you, you've seen where that permeable reactive barrier has been successful other places across the nation, same process.
With, with poultrying places across the United States. And they've used some interesting amendments in Iowa. And some of those areas, they've, they've actually used manure from large confined animal feed operations with cattle and stuff. As for another amendment to feed these bugs. So it's, it's been a science that they've been working with for over 30 years nationwide. And we've used it with other, other things. We've used it with metals on mining sites and, and you know, we've used it with contaminated petroleum bulk plants and distributors that had massive releases in southern Idahos.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then can you speak to, I'm not, you know, particularly familiar about Brownfields regulations and how they work, but are there certain uses that are still appropriate or allowed on a site like this? Or what's, what should be our vision? Or what could be our vision as far as how is a community? Or, you know, for Donaher, as far as how this property could be cleaned up and ultimately used?
So when we look at, we'll look at the site and there was actually some really good work done in the prior to about 2010, and they actually divided the Jocelyn site up into areas, area 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. And they looked at those from a human health risk assessment standpoint. And so they do models and we base all of this data on stuff, on information from the Center for Disease Control. And and so we take these risk models. And so the idea of this is that there will be a point where we can see whether this is an effective remedy and then rerun risk models once again and look at reuses. Most of the stuff in that earlier report that divided into areas looked at how it could have had non-residential uses such as commercial uses. But it gets a little, I guess the risk models we'd have to run and really be careful with where we were going because a lot of our environmental, so Idaho has what's called the Uniform Environmental Covenant Act, which is an activity and use limitation on properties that have had some type of environmental cleanup. And a lot of times we'll use that to say no groundwater, shallow groundwater can be withdrawn from the site. We'll also, if we put it to non-residential uses, sometimes we're restrictive, like we don't want a daycare, maybe not hotels. And, and so there's a variety of different mechanisms and triggers and it all comes back to the science, the data we get and where, where that path forward is. But the path forward is really important for us as far as from a cleanup standpoint. Because if the city of Sandpoint saw a need for X, Y, and Z uses, and maybe one of those three uses might be something that could be restricted. Well, we could look at other, other means. And there are always other pots of money in, in the environmental cleanup field and things like that. So nothing, I, I, I would veer away from ever seeing residential. As far as, you know, I don't know whether you could have when you deal with schools and things like childcare facilities or even, you know, hospitals or healthcare stuff. The folks that are there are in the building. So these models that are built, so you have the building like this platform here and below that there's a little bit of contamination. Maybe some vapors could, could get impacted. You run those models, you look at it and you say, okay, these kids are going to be in school for eight hours a day. What is that impact? Is that passable? The kids at the daycare might be there 10 hours a day, hopefully not. But, and then same thing with, with any type of use. So but having that vision that this is where we want to be. We want to see this property go X, Y, and Z directions. That's going to help us a lot. And it's going to help ERM. And it's going to help McFarland. So okay. And for years, the city of Sandpoint, to your credit, your predecessors have been, have been so engaged in this. It's been long-term, but we're going back to 80s, 90s, and then it just kind of, it's been a long-term process. These take, these projects are extremely long-term.
Well, thank you. That answers all my questions and
I had no gray hair when all of this started.
Yeah. I really appreciate the history too. That, that really helps, helps me understand it better. And do any other counselors have any questions? No? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Jason, do you want me to hand it over to you or Chris, who on the ERM side?
There, yeah. I'm going to share my screen if that's okay.
Perfect.
I hope you can see that. It's coming. Okay, great. Well, first of all,
Mayor Ronstadt, council members, City Minister Stapleton, thank you for having us. We know you have a pretty busy active agenda tonight. We appreciate you, you fitting us into the schedule. This worked well with the timing of IDQ supporting a remedy and us getting to work on some of it on the ground as we prepare for the spring. And Chris will go into some of the, some of the timing. My name's Jason Valencourt. I work for ERM out of our Portland, Oregon office. I'm in the Stakeholder Engagement Group at ERM. I really appreciate you having Steve Gill sort of open up and talk about some of the bigger picture history. You know, that's when we first sort of introduced ourselves to you, Mr. Mayor and City Minister Stapleton. About four years ago, it was because we wanted to start this dialogue as we are getting into, I guess, you know. Understanding the site a little bit better and understanding what we're going to do as far as the remedy. And I think the back and forth and keeping you updated. Over the last few years, I think it's been helpful, at least I hope it has been, and we want to continue our partnership with you. Moving forward as we go through. Actually, real quick tonight, we're going to just going to show you a few slides, we don't want to take up a ton of your time, you know, you probably have some questions. We're going to talk a little bit about the the site location, the IDQ approval that Steve touched on a bit. We'll talk about the remedy in a little bit more detail, Chris is our expert. And then we'll talk a little bit about sort of the path forward and how we want to continue to engage you, the neighbors. And all the other stakeholders as far as we go, but I'll turn it over to Chris. He's our, he's our expert and I'll I'll go on mute.
Hey, so Chris Berry here, Principal Consultant with ERM, been doing this for fifteen years, I've been focused on remediating legacy sites. Hence the reason for my involvement here on the Jocelyn Sandpoint site. So as you guys can see here on this simple graphic, the the Sandpoint site is located. Just west of Boyer Avenue and north of Chestnut, Chestnut Street, it's approximately twelve acres, it's currently undeveloped. There is an existing remedy on site for some shallow soil impacts that's related to the historical operations. So you have an asphalt cover and a vegetated soil barrier currently there right now. All right, next slide, Jason. So Steve set up the historical timeline and we kind of just wanted to touch base and and show you guys what has happened recently. So back in late twenty twenty one, the draft for remedial action plan addendum was submitted to DEQ. We received a number of comments in December. It took some time to go back and reevaluate the remedy to look at something that was more inclusive. And we submitted a revised remedy which had more remedial components in July. There was a little bit of back and forth, as you can see here, between DEQ and Jocelyn. Coming up with a final design that is protective of the the community and of the environment. And ultimately, that remedial action plan was approved in late September of this year. You may have seen recently some activity out at the site. We were clearing and grading the site in preparation for the remedy implementation. Some of that is just to make sure that the ground surface is clear of snow and vegetation, so we could do a geophysical survey of the utilities. Because a lot of the remedial application is intrusive in nature. And we'll actually be tearing up the ground considerably along that eastern adjacent property line. The formal remedy implementation will occur in spring of twenty twenty three, weather dependent. That will include a component of soil removal, we'll plant some trees. And then we'll also install a groundwater barrier. So as mentioned previously, we received approval from DEQ on their remedial action plan in late September. Ultimately, the approach is to do the site prep, which is largely complete. And then we will go out there in spring and do a soil removal, we'll do a dig and haul. Using some large diameter auger borings in the former historical operational area. We'll also plant approximately forty eight tree wells, and as you can see on the right, this is a simplified graphic of what a tree well looks like. And essentially, you direct the roots to extract groundwater from specific horizons within the the subsurface. So we'll have forty eight trees generally along the eastern half of the property. Planted to extract groundwater in a sustainable manner, and they will also treat groundwater as part of the part of the phyto process. And then lastly, east of the tree well extraction field will have a groundwater barrier. And as Steve mentioned, that'll have a reactive amendment, which is basically designed to treat. This constituent impacts in groundwater and that'll run largely along the entire eastern length of the property boundary. As mentioned, we're looking to start in May twenty twenty three, weather dependent.
So that that dark green infill, that's the the water groundwater barrier?
Uh, no, this is simply a graphic of a tree well cross section, the groundwater barrier is not shown on this graph.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chris. So obviously, we've been, we've been keeping the city and the county apprised of of the updates and we'll continue to do that. We want to do that, we want to hear from you and your thoughts as we move forward. We had a relationship with the county with regard to our Priest River site. And everything went very well with that and having the that coordination with them as well as IDQ. Obviously, the the, as Steve mentioned, the IDQ conversation and partnership will continue with with the monitoring. That will go on over the next few years after the remedy is instituted. And as we move forward and having those conversations with the neighbors and and in the city as well. So we'll want to continue to update you as we go along, you tell us the frequency that you want updates from us. But we look forward to doing that, we look forward to working with you as we move forward in the process.
Great, thank you, Jason, thank you, Chris. One question I have is, and maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't, but. I'm curious what what the long term play is here for Danaher. Do they have a vision for what they ultimately want to see or or do with this property or is the well just stop there? Can can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely speak to that. So ultimately, we're going to remediate the site according to the approved remedy. With provisions restricting the future end use to commercial slash industrial use. Now, upon completion of the remedy. The property will be reevaluated for best and final use, which might be a green space, it might be a commercial park. But ultimately, those discussions will be had with DEQ and with the community of Sandpoint.
Thank you, and do you have a projected or anticipated timeline for what what that might look like?
So ultimately, what's going to happen is, once we implement this remedy, it'll take about forty five to sixty days, barring any unforeseen issues. There'll be a period of remedy performance monitoring to make sure that the remedies are performing as designed. And once that data comes in, then we'll be able to give you a better understanding of what the timeline looks like with regards to. The future use and redevelopment of the property.
So I mean, you know, are we are we talking a year, are we talking ten years, I mean, can you put any kind of guesstimate to that or?
At this point, it would be a shot in the dark, given that the remedy hasn't been implemented, but I can tell you it's going to be more than two years. Because we'll need a number of data points to evaluate the data from statistical standpoint.
Okay, do you have a sense of of how far, you know, the the quantity or extent of cleanup that needs to happen before? Before you reach that mark?
Well, the cleanup will happen immediately, you know, basically, the soil removal is instantaneous, so. A large chunk of mass will be removed through that effort. The PRB, once installed, is instantaneous and will immediately begin treating groundwater. The tree wells will take approximately anywhere between two to six years to establish themselves. And it's dependent on the species' success and of course, the weather that plays into the the overall picture as it relates to the survival of the trees. But once that tree well network is established, it'll effectively. Capture and extract groundwater in a sustainable manner, there will be no waste and it will treat the. The impacts through phytorespiration of the tree's natural process.
Thank you, Chris, that's helpful. Does counsel have any questions?
One question, excuse me, Chris, what happens to that asphalt layer, excuse me? That you described, which currently has the topsoil on top of it, does that asphalt layer remain?
Yeah, so as Steve mentioned, you know, there are some restrictions in place on this property as it relates to the protectiveness of the remedy. If, let's say, the property were sold, the future property owner wouldn't have to go through a process. That basically changes the institutional and engineering control, so if they wanted to build, they would have to look at a design. That either keeps that protection in place and keeps that pathway incomplete. Or if they wanted to modify it, they would have to go through discussions and negotiations with DEQ. And get their approval on a soil management plan and a future development plan. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, I believe that's the process we used over at Priest River as well.
It is.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I could add to for for context with this, and it jumps ahead a little bit to other items on council agendas. Tonight, but this site, this area was identified as an area. Knowing that there would be redevelopment at some point in the future for a recommended subarea plan, and you're going to hear that tonight. From Chris Sahas as he's presenting the final report through Leland Consulting and. Amy is aware of that and is part of our comprehensive plan process, looking at this for subarea planning. And what the city and the citizens would want to see for re reuse of that and redevelopment of that property will be part of that. Land use map, subarea planning as part of the comp plan.
I have one question, hey, Chris, this is Justin Dick. As part of the mitigation, there's materials, contaminated materials are actually removed from the site, what happens to those? After they're removed, what's the process look like there, where do they go, what happens to it?
Well, before we take them off site, we actually sample them and profile them, so we can understand what level of impact they have. If there, if they have zero impacts and it's non-detect, then we will basically petition to reuse them on site or take them to a landfill. For disposal, but if they have COC impacts that are above standards, then essentially that waste has to be transported off site to Utah. And incinerated at their aragonite facility.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Are there other tree well sites in the United States? That have used the tree wells?
Yes, ERM has actually implemented a number of these sites or implemented this remedy at a number of sites across the nation. But just to give you something that's more local, the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board implemented a similar technology with their infiltration. Wastewater infiltration field and the tree wells are thriving extremely well, it's not exactly apples to apples, but they use the same concept. And the tree wells are preventing wastewater impacts from meeting the groundwater table.
And that was in your report, right? The report that we got, I thought I read something about Hayden.
That was in a response to comments, that was a cover letter that was associated with the remedial action plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, counsel? All right, hearing none, thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Dan, you good?
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, if you could please take the podium, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for adjusting your schedule for me. I've read the the work plan addendum and generally I'm pleased with what I see, I I think there's a lot of lot of neat things that are going on here. And Steve answered a couple of my questions, one thing that's puzzling me though is. And this may sound like a strange question, is you got the leaves that are, you know, picking up and doing the oxidation of the of the PCP. Are those going to be contaminated, is that is that going to be investigation derived waste? What happens to the leaves that fall down and blow away? So it's a silly question. And the other, the other question I'm I'm concerned about is the long term financial stability of the companies behind this. And there seems to be plenty of opportunity to kick the can down the road and that that causes me great concern, so. That's all I'll say about that, I'll be interested in hearing about the leaves, though, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Could we have his name, please?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm Dan Haley, I live in Sandpoint.
Appreciate that. Chris, could you speak to those two questions, the what happens to the leaves and the long term financial stability of Danaher?
Yeah, yeah, so essentially, the trees may not be deciduous in nature, it depends on the species that we. Determine are the best fit for this site. At first place, at the first point, there'll be a number of different species planted to see which ones perform the best for this. Specific site condition and this climate. If they are deciduous in nature, there's a number of case studies that show that there is not COC bioaccumulation in the leaf. And organic matter that comes off the trees, it actually phytorespirates to the atmosphere directly, which is fantastic. And then if you have non-deciduous trees, you obviously don't have organic matter falling off the trees in the same manner. And the same concept exists where it's a phyto remediate phyto evaporation process, excuse me, to the atmosphere. And this is at levels that are there, there's no risk associated with them. With regards to the financial viability of our client, they have set aside reserves for the future. They've identified funds for the future and the long term component to this remedial effort. But aside from that, I cannot speak to their financial viability.
Great, thank you, Chris, appreciate that. And just for my own head here, can you kind of paint the picture for me of what that? Groundwater barrier looks like, i- is that, are you essentially digging a trench along the eastern property line and then? You know, putting a barrier down there, what what does that look like?
Yeah, so actually, it's going to be, we're going to use some technology called a one pass trench. And so this is a large, extremely large piece of equipment that'll come in on a number of trucks, flatbed trailers. And they'll construct it there on site. Once they get it constructed, basically, it'll have an arm, a trenching arm that extends down. To forty five feet below ground surface. And it will trench three feet wide, forty five feet deep, and two hundred feet long. As it trenches and removes these soils, it will also be placing the reactive amendment into place simultaneously. So as we're progressing from north to south or south to north, the the barrier wall will be installed in a very efficient manner. We're anticipating sixteen days on that remedial component to get it in the ground and completely in place.
And at two hundred feet, that's essentially along the eastern boundary of the property?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any any other questions, one more swing, okay? Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that, and Madam Clerk, no one else would care to speak on this topic, anyone online?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you again, everyone, for that update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Going back to our regularly scheduled agenda here. We'll now move on to old business, the first item under old business is city council's review and acceptance of our county's canvas of election results. Pursuant to Idaho Code, Section fifty dash four one two. The county commissioners, within ten days following an election, shall meet for the purpose of canvassing the results of the election. The city received the county's can canvas results on November twenty third, two thousand twenty two. Upon the city's receipt of the canvas, with the tabulation of votes prepared by the election judges and clerks. The results shall be entered in the minutes of city council proceedings. The sole issue for the city of Sandpoint voters on the November eighth, two thousand twenty two ballot. Was a question as to whether the city of Sandpoint shall adopt an ordinance providing for an increase of its current seven percent hotel motel room occupancy tax. To fourteen percent and extend the period of years for its collection to end December thirty first, two thousand thirty five. As relayed on the ballot pursuant to Resolution twenty two dash zero four seven, approved by city council on August third, two thousand twenty two. This tourist lodging tax applies to all short term rentals of thirty days or less. Including hotels, motels, condos, and vacation homes, with half of the revenues received continuing to fund. Purposes approved by voters in two thousand fourteen, including public safety services, public parks and other infrastructure and capital projects. And the remaining fifty percent dedicated to street pavement, ceiling, widening, reconstruction and associated stormwater infrastructure. And pedestrian priority network improvements, including sideways and pathway maintenance, reconstruction. And extensions to provide connectivity and increase ADA acts accessibility and safety. I think that's the longest sentence I've ever read. And please hold your applause, the the tax, the tax increase passed, thank you voters. Administrative costs and direct costs to collect and enforce the tax will also be funded from taxes remitted, where the city will retain the actual cost of collecting. And administering the tax. Any excess revenue received will be placed in designated property tax relief fund. According to the results of the county's canvas, more than sixty percent voted in favor. Therefore, pursuant to Idaho code section fifty dash ten forty six, this ballot measure was approved. So does counsel have any questions? And entertain a motion to accept Bonner County's canvas of the election results of the city of Sandpoint's November eighth, two thousand twenty two special election. Second, moved in seconded. Any further discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor McAllister, yes. Counselor Rule, yes. Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next is the proposed ordinance that will adopt the changes to the tourist lodging tax approved by Sandpoint voters. More information on this tax and local projects that will fund can be found under news and announcements on the homepage of the city website at www.sandpointidaho.gov. Does counsel have any questions? Okay, I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, repealing Sandpoint City Code Title Three, Chapter Ten Hotel Motel Occupancy Tax and replacing with a new Title Three, Chapter Ten Short Term Rental Occupancy Tax, providing for severability and providing for publication in an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
So moved second.
And moved in seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule, yes. Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister, yes. Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes. All right. The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended and that the ordinance passed its second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule, yes. Counselor McAllister, yes. Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. Next, council will consider permitting the harvest of geese at Sandpoint City Beach Park during hunting season. I will now yield the force police chief Corey.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. What you have before you tonight is a resolution and a proposal for an ordinance to allow our goose hunt. As most of the councils aware, this has been an ongoing issue for several years. I don't want to go back and recount all the things that we've done, but just to highlight a few things for those that are just tuning in. Some of the things the city has tried over the last several years is harassment tools, dog handlers, flags, tapes. They've tried other mechanisms such as repellents. We tried to relocate them the last couple of years. This year because as the bird flu influenza, we weren't able to do that. Everything that the city's done to try to mitigate the the geese at the beach basically isn't working. Talking with Idaho fishing game, the next logical step is to actually go ahead and approve a goose hunt or as part of that management plan. So the recommendation is from Idaho fishing game and myself is to approve a goose hunt that would take place at the city beach. That would be managed by the police department this first go around for a little late getting into it. The last month I've been watching the geese at the beach. We've averaged about three hundred geese at the beach since the snow fell. Those numbers have dropped and they're spending a little bit more time offshore. I'm not a goose hunter. I don't know how that affects them or doesn't, but we're still going to move forward with it anyways. So the the goal is is to really create a as part of that packet, that plan is to allow a permitting process take place. So just kind of a recap for anybody listening. If you're over the age of twenty one, you have the ability to apply. If you have your goose license, your and your tags that go with it, you can fill an application. The city is going to make it public tonight to fill it out online or tomorrow. Tomorrow they'll post it tomorrow. That you can go on and you can either get it offline. You can come into the city. You can get an application. If you qualify for it, which is basically you have to be over the age of twenty one to fill out the application. You got to have show that you have your hunting licenses in place. You can list on that application process at least four individuals that you want to shoot with you. Those individuals don't have to be twenty one or older. They can be younger. They just have to follow the same rules. Got to be licensed and registered. Part of that packet you saw that talking with fish a game, they recommend shooting twice a week. Because if we do it too often, the geese won't come back. So they recommend twice a week with the time period that we have. By the time the season's over, we only have about a three week span. So that the deadline or hope is is that we'll have enough applicants by the thirteenth of next week that we can do a drawing and we'll draw a name out. They'll pick a slot that they want that week and then we'll be in the morning to manage it. The timeframe, if you didn't catch it, is going to be from whenever the the state statute opens it up, which is different depending on the day. So it's basically dawn. We're going to stop them at ten o'clock. They have till eleven to kind of clean up their their area and leave. So it's we're hoping this is a good start. Next year with passing, hopefully this year, we'll have a a plan in place for for next year moving forward. So questions, concerns?
Any questions, counsel?
No, I do have comments. First of all, the plan was really extensive and I appreciate it. And one of the things I know that the city tried was flying somebody in from the organization Geese Peace to try and oil the eggs, but we all know when they got here, they said, we have no idea where these nests would be. It'd be private property, it'd be et cetera. And so I I really thought a lot about this because I I don't know. I know citizens are concerned about the geese and you know what will happen to them. But I also thought about, you know, what was the original intent for city beach when the Lions Club put it there? And so I have a quote from nineteen fifty six. It says, now, just for a moment, shut your eyes and visualize a beautiful park with many tall ever green shade trees, broad stretches of green grass, flower beds and borders, fireplaces, picnic tables, park benches, playgrounds for children and a beautiful and beautiful Lake Ponderay as a background. Such a park will be a real showplace, a place where we will be proud to bring our families and friends, a place tourists will long remember. So after reading that, I thought the intent is pretty clear there that it would be a park for all of us to enjoy and not used as a geese sanctuary. Right? That the intent was that it would be for the community. And so I know I have grandchildren who are teenagers and when they come to visit, they are down at the beach all the time. And the first comment, every single time they come home is, oh, my gosh, it is so gross. You know, goose poop everywhere.
Everywhere.
Right. And so I know this wasn't an easy decision to come through but or to get to, but the plan is, I mean, kudos to you and your team and fishing game because it really is well laid out. I encourage the public to read it. But really, you know, it's about the people. And so I think for everybody to enjoy it. And when I read the report about E. coli in the water, I just about flipped out because I thought I see parents with letting their little toddlers down play in the water and that's disgusting. So we've done everything and I believe that this is, you know, and reaching out to the Kalispel tribe was really great and getting their input. So thank you very much and yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you, Corey. Yeah, go ahead.
Pardon my voice again, chief, but how will we measure the success or the failure of this project? Is this? Do we have a target number that we're going for here? Second question, is there any data on the population of geese that are migratory versus year round residents of city beach? I read the obviously the historical studies with the the banded geese returning something about sixty percent return every year after they were relocated. But how how can we be sure that we're not out there shooting geese that literally just landed on their way to Mexico or something?
You know, honestly.
There's a refund.
Yeah, no, there isn't. We know historically based off Paul and the way like they are coming back. We're in that from what little research I've done, we're on that migration path where they see the the resident geese and so they do land. So that who which which bird is being shot, whether it's a local one or one that's just flying by? I have no clue. I think the the ability to measure the success this year is going to be a little bit harder because we're starting so late in the season. And I'm not sure what that harvest rate will be. If we can start it earlier, we might see a better a better result. Fishing game was pretty. Some of the other cities that we talked to, and this is a yearly thing that they do to help just manage their geese. Because it's such in the ones that are in that flight pattern, they have such a problem with this. So I think short term, I don't have a great answer for that. The expectation this year with the snow flying and not seeing very many geese at the beach currently. Who's going to put in? I'm so sure. If we get some results, I think it'd be a success. And then hopefully that from what I've been told, geese are pretty smart. And once they started seeing blinds set up and we're going to use picnic tables as blinds. So they'll associate picnic tables with possibly hunters and they won't land. So hopefully that'll be a deterrent, but I think it's a couple of years out before we get any good data.
So is this proposal for a one time hunt or are we?
Well, this is one time. So this is, well, this is for this year. My goal would be is to come back next year. Hopefully earlier I talked with Austin today, the boats come out about the the fifteenth of October. The water is usually down by the logs by the first of November, the the goose hunt approved by the states open by then. The hope would be is to maybe change our timeframe next year from November to the first of December or something different. Or to better have a better ability to harvest some of those geese.
And I did read something in your presentation about shots must be fired over the water.
Correct.
How does that limit the 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 zone in which the hunters can actually target geese? If there's geese behind them, they're they're not allowed to shoot them.
Yeah. So the goal is going to be is if you look at that map, they're going to have to the blinds are going to be set up almost near the water, which means they're going to be shooting everything over the water. The last thing we want to do is have someone standing back on the beach and shooting the wrong direction. So the the goal is to really keep that shooting pattern over over the water to try to keep it as safe as we can as we venture off into a a new thing for us. So.
I think it's important to note too in our in the our procedures and the rules for the hunt. If a goose is shot and it has a band, they're required to report that they have a band mechanism for tracking whether these are returning geese or if a goose doesn't have a band, we can presume it perhaps is new to the beach or potentially is a migratory goose. But for those that are banded, then those will need to be reported as part of the process and in in coordination with fishing game, Fish and Wildlife Services will be able to go back and determine whether this was a bird we banned it two years ago or three years ago. So that's going to give us some sense of a data measure.
Correct. And it just to be clear, this is strictly for the beach, right? There's been some questions about some other properties of their city private. This is strictly only opening it up for the beach within that specific timeframes and those two days approved, but those have been permitted.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Hi, chief. Thanks for putting all this together. A few questions for you. It's my understanding that we've gotten to this point. We've we've done. I've been through all of the different various tactics. I've seen them all. The E. coli portion of this, do we have any other understanding of other area lakes, North Idaho, Montana, Washington? We have more E. coli because of these geese in comparison to these other areas that have geese as well, too?
I'm no expert, but what I read basically was those those areas that are highly populated with geese have a higher elevation of it where we said, I I couldn't tell you.
When we were working with Shannon Williamson, when she was the waterkeeper, we were specifically and it was waterkeepers that were out at the beach measuring E. coli levels. There had been discussions that there was a belief that the increased E. coli level that we were seeing was likely related to the increasing geese population.
And then would there be some efforts then after this is done this year, late into the season and then next year that we would go back to rounding the geese up as the avian flu goes away? Or would we continue with this year over year until we reach the desired result?
We will still plan to submit our permit requesting consideration for relocation again, not knowing what happens and the result of of what happens this year. The bird flu is still prevalent. The likelihood of us being able to get approval for a relocation is unlikely based on discussions with officials for next year as well. For clarification, our permit we can ask for and both relocation, we can also ultimately also request depredation. So that would be a euthanizing geese at the beach as well. And so again, the proposal and what we had heard from the public, which ultimately resulted in this proposal was the approach of actually a harvesting of the goose as opposed to a wasting through euthanization of the meat. This would be again potentially an interim step before we even consider going to that next level. Kim Woodruff, when he was our parks director, did an awful lot of research into if we were to go down the pathway of euthanization. And so that's a large number of geese. What type of harvesting would be available? Were their groups interested in doing that? Were there processing houses? And for a large number of geese like we see down at the beach, generally he didn't have positive responses to that. So again, presuming through this, we're talking about hunters who are hunting for purposes of ultimately harvesting the the birds. That's where we landed on this step.
Thank you.
And one more question about just the plan, Corey. So i- if if the blinds are set up essentially on the edge of the beach and they're shooting out over the water, what if we usually all the birds kind of, you know, congregate in the grassy area? So can they just go behind?
They'll have to wait. They'll have to wait for them to take flight.
Okay.
So.
Can they encourage them to take flight?
So fishing game rule says they're not allowed to harass any of the wildlife. So the answer, the answer would be no, the hunters couldn't.
What if children want to go play at the park that day and?
Yeah, that that would be a different issue. That'd be okay.
What did you say the timeframe was to actually shoot the birds?
For for this year, what we're proposing is that whatever the timeframe the state has, so the state changes it from at dawn. So it's more than likely about seven o'clock. The goal is to have the stop shooting at ten and then have them have everything policed, cleaned up and out by eleven.
And then would there be signage posted there to let folks know there's a pretty healthy group of citizens that walk walk around the beach and?
We do. I've been down on the morning watching that to see the activity we have. I was actually shocked with how many walkers we do have early in the morning, even on the brisk on the brisk day. So we'll have signs up at the beach saying the beach is closed. We'll have the walkways coming from Edgewater with signs saying it's closed. We'll actually have officers posted there this first time just to it's going to be twice a week. We'll have staff there to help monitor those coming and going. Just to just to be safe.
Science saying free bird at the Trinity.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I do have one question. So just in the sense of keeping track of our success rate long term, are we still going to be banning the geese when they're in a molting stage? Even though we're taking on this piece of it, if this were to continue on a yearly basis, would we ban so we could keep track or is?
Well, I think that's it. This is like a two phase process. So the the hunting and hopefully harvesting some is one phase or our second phase, like Jennifer was talking about earlier, we can, we're going to put in for that permitted again next year. Whether they allow us to to capture them and relocate is completely up to the the feds. If they allow us, then they would ban them and then tag them.
But we wouldn't do any banning and associated with a hunting piece at all. So.
All they'd be required to do is to return and report what they did. So the part of the request would be is that they tell us how many geese they harvest if they have a band and the band number.
Okay.
So that we can track those that have been here over the last couple of years that we've been banning them.
Okay.
And Corey, as I understand, every community that we've reached out to that has taken this approach has followed a path similar to ours, trying everything else first and not finding success, but they ultimately did find success with the with the harvest. Is that true?
From what I can tell, the answer is yeah, but it's a repeated thing. It's not a once and and it's something that's part of that management plan that they they open it back up every year and manage it depending on their needs. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Perfect.
Are there any members of the public that would like to comment on this matter? Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of permits to discharge firearms at city beach park under specified rules for the purpose of a goose hunt. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
No.
Counselor Counselor McAllister, yes. Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Sprow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule, yes.
Motion passes. Okay. So counsel has taken action to authorize the issuance of permits for a goose hunt at Sandpoint City Beach under specified rules, which will allow for the use of dogs to retrieve the geese. With dogs currently not permitted off leash at city beach park, an amendment to city code is required in order to allow dogs off leash at a city park or other city property under certain conditions on a temporary basis, such as a special event permit or by action of the council. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. An ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending amending Sandpoint City Code Title Five In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending, amending Sandpoint City Code Title V, Chapter Four, Section Five C, Dogs permitted off-leash, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication in an effective date. I would entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and the summary is approved.
Removed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule. Yes. Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor McAllister. Yes. Counselor Dick.
No.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
The motion has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety be suspended. And then the ordinance passes second and third reading under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
Removed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Rule. Yes. Counselor McAllister. Yes. Counselor Welker.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
No.
Motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. The next item on the agenda is the final report from Leland Consulting and consideration and acceptance of their final analysis and recommendations. I will now yield the Florida City Administrator Jennifer State.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm happy to introduce tonight, uh, in person, we have Chris Sahas with, uh, Leland and we have Ted Camp also with Leland participating, uh, online electronically tonight. Uh, several months ago, uh, Chris and Ted presented their draft report, um, their economic analysis, land use study, housing study to city council and, um, following that presentation, there were some counts, some questions that council members had. Um, some further clarification that council members wanted and as a process of going through and finalizing their reports and their recommendations and addressing those questions that council members had, uh, you have included in your packet, a, um, final copy of the report. There were a couple of sections where, uh, where, uh, sentences dropped off and Chris has, uh, subsequently, uh, fixed that in the report. We needed to get our council packet posted and he was working on those changes. So we had to get content up there for you. But, uh, the final report does have the complete sentences in it. So, uh, with that, I'll hand it over to, uh, Chris to address and Ted, uh, online.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, again, I'm Chris Zahas with Leland Consulting Group, um, from Portland, Oregon. And I, um, you saw me and my colleague Ted back in July and I'm going to share my screen here. Works just like that. And I have a, a brief presentation. I'm not going to go through all the material that we, uh, that's in the report and that we presented back in July. I want to just hit the highlights of what, of answering some of those questions that you brought up and, um, hitting again, let's see, the conclusions that, um, we're recommending as a part of the study. So, um, let me just jump right into that. Uh, before I, actually before I jump into the, um, data, I wanted to just hit some of the highlights of what we saw, just as context. Um, we know, and of course you know, it's, it's a topic of conversation all the time. This is a really fast growing area. Even among the shortlist of fast growing cities in the country, this is fast. And we see that we work in a lot of different communities. And so we know how very real the pressures on your city are. Um, and that context sort of underlines and, um, flows through a lot of how we looked at the data and the recommendations that we are bringing forward. Uh, part of that context is your housing pricing. Um, it's off the charts. It's grown a lot. Uh, just in the past couple of years, since 2019, your housing prices have, average price has doubled. Um, now it's approaching $700,000. Uh, that's from April. It may have even gone up a little bit more since then or down as some markets have, um, been fluctuating. But again, that's a, that's that baseline from where we're starting this housing study and how, helping address your affordability crisis. So in the July presentation afterwards, you asked several questions. Um, one of the questions was about what are the trends around second home ownership in the community and how's that impacting, um, the, the market? So we did a little bit of a deeper dive into that, uh, data. It's a little bit hard to come by in the census provides the, the most reliably consistent apples to apples over time, um, tracking. And so what we have on the screen is, is several different data points. Um, but the most important part is that, um, countywide, a lot of the data is available at the county level only. The countywide Sandpoint is approximately 16% of all of the housing units in the county are within the city boundaries. And what's interesting is vacant housing units, which all of those categories in the little table on the left are different types of vacant, um, housing units. The, um, or there's multiple kinds of vacant housing units. There's, you know, houses that are for sale. There's also second homes where it's not the primary residence. Of all vacant housing units in the county, um, only 7% of those are within the city. So almost half is half fewer than you would expect based on the, um, percentage of housing that's within the city. And of those that are specifically within that orange category of second homes, seasonal and recreational use, only 4% of those are within the city. And so what that tells me is that the, um, the, the kind of the, the question of is second home housing really impacting Sandpoint in particular? Um, I would say the data is telling us no, that that's more of a unincorporated county issue. A lot of that vacation homes are outside of the city boundaries themselves. As far as the trend line data goes of how that might have, how that dynamic has changed since the, the table on the left shows since 2010. That's countywide data in that table. So again, if you kind of think about that 7%, 4%, that will tell you a little bit about, uh, how that plays out in Sandpoint proper. But what we saw was a significant jump between 2010 and 2015 and the number of, um, vacation homes. And then that's sort of stabilized since 2015 to 2020 through the census. I'll caveat that, that there's the possibility, it's now 2022, so 2020 census data is a couple of years old that some of that, some of that may have changed. But what we're seeing is that it's a more significant issue in the county than it is here in the city.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Yeah.
What was the 7% versus the 4%?
Uh, to, all vacant housing units, um, within the county, 7% of those are within the city. And of just that orange category of, of, um, seasonal, recreational or occasional use, only 4% of those are in the city compared to, um, the total. Another question that you asked was about commuting patterns. We presented some data about the jobs and the workforce. And, um, the question came up about, um, are people having to, you know, commute from far away to, uh, because of affordability reasons to, uh, go to their jobs here in Sandpoint. So the table, the chart on the right, it was in the report originally in July, and that just shows the, the, the big increase in in commuting over the past 10, 20 years. The little dotted line at the bottom on the right is those who actually live and work in Sandpoint, um, which has actually been fairly stable with some ups and downs throughout, um, the different parts of the economy. What we did, uh, to respond to your question was we looked at, um, specifically at those in commuters, where do they commute from? And, uh, it's really available at the, at the countywide level. And so the chart on the left, um, the top two are the ones that really matter, the, the dotted orange line in the middle. That's basically the same as the blue dotted line on the right as the people who are commuting from within Sandpoint. Um, but the top line is showing, really matches up well with the green line on the, on the right chart, which is showing that a lot of those people who don't live in Sandpoint but commute to jobs here are coming from elsewhere within Bonner County. All those other counties, um, Cootney County, uh, Boundary County, Spokane County, you see those lines down at the bottom of the chart. Those are actually pretty flat and, um, I was a little surprised when I saw that, but what it's telling me is that the dynamic of people having to commute from really, really far away for affordability reasons to jobs here is really not happening. They're ha- they're coming from elsewhere within the county. They can't afford Sandpoint proper, but, um, I, I think in part because of the distance to those other metros, you know, Spokane is a good hour and a half away. Um, Coeur d'Alene's a, whatever, an hour away. The, the sandpoints in Bonner County sort of operate as their own market and there's not that much, um, interplay between those neighboring, uh, markets.
Uh, and so those long distance commuters, tho- those trends are actually fairly flat. Can you explain the, the dash line in the chart on the left here? Uh, how can Sandpoint be the origin of in commuting workers?
Yeah, it's a, it's sort of, maybe Ted can correct me, but it's the mislabeling of the title. Those are, those are just, the chart is just where workers come from, period.
Okay.
I see his head nodding that yes, that's right. So it's inclusive of people that also live here.
Gotcha.
Yeah, it's just anyone who works in Sandpoint, where did they start? Where, where's their residence?
Yeah. Another, uh, question that came up during the July presentation was our presentation of some of the countywide building permit data. And the numbers that we showed were quite low, um, based on what, um, you had seen and others were presenting. And, and so we actually went back to the county, uh, talked to them directly. We were getting our data from the, um, census where counties are required to submit permit data to the census and census does tracking, but we went to the source. And it, uh, so we, so the report that you have has updated data for that where, um, uh, those numbers were low that we presented. And so, uh, these higher numbers of recent trends, um, are now updated in the report.
And Chris, I assume that these are equivalent residential units or something like that?
Yeah. And, and Ted and I have been actually working just today to make sure that we're, we're correctly, um, accounting for those that they're not permits per se, but they're total units represented by those permits.
Thank you.
Um, and so, uh, we also updated, and this is not in your report, but it will be when we finalize it. Is, uh, we updated the residential pipeline, um, as of August. What's in the report was as, as of April, it's a, it's a constantly moving target, but, it, it's just phenomenal, the amount of projects that you have in the pipeline at various levels of planning, either from just, it's a, it's an idea that somebody's talked to the city about to actually, you know, permits in hand and construction happening. Um, upwards of 1,700 units. So if you look back at, uh, the previous slide where, uh, the Sandpoint numbers are, you know, 56, 256, you know, and all of a sudden you've got 1,700 in the pipeline. That's a huge jump. Again, uh, playing the, the dismal economist role, uh, those aren't all necessarily going to happen. Um, especially if a recession is looming as we often are hearing about lately. And it also speaks to some of the recommendations that I'll, I'll get to in a minute about capacity to actually deliver on those units, both from a, a regulatory and a, and a developer capacity point of view. Um, but you know, if those were all to come to fruition, that's a, a huge, uh, impact. Um, so the, kind of the core recommendations, these are numbers, the next few slides have not changed since, um, we presented in July. But, but the big recommendations of the key output of our work was providing some demand forecasts for, uh, housing in the community to help support the comprehensive planning effort to create some targets that we can, uh, that you can work with in, um, your planning so that you can achieve it. So, uh, the first, this slide is multifamily. The top is rentals, the bottom is ownership. Um, so we're showing 10-year potential demand, uh, for between 400 and 600 apartments and 200 and 400, um, attached ownership units, which would be condominiums, townhomes and so on. These are further broken down in the charts by, um, income range and what we're analyzing here, and I think we talked about this in July, is that this is demand. It's not necessarily saying you will achieve it or that the market can deliver it at price points that are affordable to these incomes, but the demand is there. And that sort of creates the, the charge for you and the, and the challenge as planners as to how we can, um, meet that demand.
And, and Chris, can you talk a little bit about how you got these projections? Were you simply kind of projecting what those proportions were today into the future or so is it like the same basic proportion that we see today in, in terms of demand or can you explain that a little bit so I can?
I could, I could try, but Ted would be the best one to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you sort of, uh, described it in a nutshell. There were, we're looking at, uh, consensus overall growth projections for, uh, we really started at the, the county level, uh, look at, uh, Sandpoint historical capture rates of those within different product categories and sort of go from there. We, we do assume and it's, it's not always, uh, going to be the case and some of it comes down to policy, but we do, uh, assume that there's not going to be much change in the, uh, income distribution of the population that's in Sandpoint now and the population that's coming in. Now, g- given housing costs, uh, it, there's going to naturally be some upward movement in that, uh, it, it always, it seems to move less, uh, than you would think though. Um, a- and, and part of that is that income is not the whole story and affordability. There's wealth issues that come into play, especially in the older age brackets, but that, that's basically the, uh, the approach that we take.
Thank you.
Uh, we did a similar analysis for single family housing, which we're calling lower density here. So, um, between 360 and 535, um, what we're calling small lot, single family, but these are detached homes and a much smaller amount of the larger lot, um, in part because, uh, we constrain it, we constrain those larger lots by, uh, homes by, um, income, uh, that, you know, those, no one in the lower income brackets we show here would, would naturally be able to afford those larger homes. And of course your land constrained, um, and there's no capacity to provide that. Uh, we then summarize it by acreage and then this really becomes a.
I'm sorry to keep stopping you. I.
No, no, that's okay. That's why we're here to answer your question. So I appreciate it.
But wh- what's the assumption here? So if, I mean, you just said it, right? We don't have the land, right? So you, you're projecting, you know, like low capture, high capture, 65 and 87, uh, large lot units that basically don't exist, right? So if we take that out and say that's going to be close to zero, does that increase the demand for smaller lot units or, or could, could we see that spill over to attached or? What, what, do you have an assumption around that?
You know, I don't think we have an assumption as to where that, like if you don't meet, if you don't meet that demand, where does it go? Um, it goes several places. I think some of that would probably gravitate towards, um, uh, smaller unit sizes and would bid up the pricing of those. Um, some of it might escalate the pricing of whatever large lot housing you do have, um, you know, gets more competition. And some of that would probably go out to the county and to unincorporated areas.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, and then in the report, we, we further break those numbers out into acreages based on the, the average size of those units to, again, to give you some context to work with through the comprehensive planning process of how much land are we talking about if we were to, uh, meet these, um, growth forecasts? And, uh, we paired that with a capacity analysis. So, uh, looking at all the vacant and underutilized land across the different zoning categories, um, looking at multifamily residential, um, looking at what, how much of that land is already spoken for, how much of it is, um, still in play. Um, we did the same for, uh, a single family residential and you'll see the, the vast majority of what we're identifying is in the ACI area. Um, and not in the city proper. And we do the same for industrial, um, and as well as commercial and commercial, I'll just say office for lots of reasons that you're probably well aware of. Sandpoint's not a real strong office market. And so we don't, um, even though there's not much capacity that we're showing on the map, that there's not much demand that, and growth that would happen here. So to the recommendations and the key findings, so you know, the key findings underpinning everything is you have a lot of recent growth. And I didn't mention it earlier, but all of that growth is explained through in migration. Your natural growth is actually negative, uh, the more deaths than births. Um, but that growth, so that growth is tremendous though. Leading to your, um, housing affordability crisis, um, in our work, we also identified and, and spoke with a lot of stakeholders and, um, within the community. And we know that there are some very real regulatory and infrastructure, especially issues that are constraining the ability to, um, meet that demand. And to the industrial side, um, you'll see in our recommendations, we don't have any recommendations about converting your industrial land. Um, in our work, um, you do have an adequate supply of industrial land today. Um, but in our work, uh, and in your economy, um, I think it's, Ted and I found that it's pretty remarkable and, and unique as a community that you have such a broad-based, um, employment base. Uh, you're not just a service-oriented resort town. You actually have manufacturing. You have high technology. Um, and, uh, to maintain competitiveness in that, you need a land supply to support growth, to support, um, competitiveness and, um, a selection and a diversity of opportunity sites when employers want to expand and, uh, or choose to locate here. And so, uh, industrial more so than residential land, we, um, often expect and want to see a, what we call an oversupply of land. More land than, than maybe the growth would necessarily justify because you want to create that market, um, opportunity. And of course, some of those properties, just like your previous presentation. And of course, some of those properties, just like your previous presentation, might be brownfields and they've got some barriers to they're they're available, they're vacant, but they're not readily developable. And and your typical employer developer is would probably pass it over because it's got so much baggage with it. So to the recommendations, we're really focusing on the housing. So the first one, which we we did mention back in July, is to create a multi-jurisdictional housing authority to tackle your housing issues, particularly around the the lower range, those lower income brackets, those are brackets that the private sector developer market is never going to be able to meet just because of land costs, construction costs, there's no way to deliver housing that's going to be affordable to those income ranges. So whether it's rental or ownership. So if you want to meet your housing needs, particularly at those lower ends of the housing market, you're going to need to help. You need public financing, both at the federal level through like tax credits, but also local funding tools. And a housing authority that operates regionally can address this regional housing problem. That's not just Sandpoint's problem to solve. It's not to say that a housing authority is the only organization that should be involved. Housing authorities are good at sort of that, what we call the regulated affordable housing at those very deeply affordable levels. But there's also what we'd call workforce housing and missing middle housing types that aren't necessarily using federal tax credit subsidies, but that are maybe in the eighty to one hundred and twenty percent of area median income that are going to be affordable or at least attainable to your service workers, your basic workforce here in town. And you might need other organizations to help work, supply those nonprofit housing developers, land, community land trusts, other entities. So there's there's sort of a toolkit of organizations that you might need to bring into play.
If I if I may, I think that in reading your report, that was kind of one of the very saddest things to me is reading that it was the low-wage earners who are leaving and rightly so, because there's no place for them to live. So thank you for recognizing that. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. And a part of those recommendations are more kind of zoning and code policy, but looking at your 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 building heights and density regulations to explore ways where you can increase some of those densities to maximize the opportunity on some of those infill sites that can provide a little bit more housing than than maybe is allowed by right. Sometimes you can do that with strings attached. So whether that's density bonuses or height bonuses that maybe is attached to a requirement that a certain percentage of the units are affordable or some kind of public amenity or public service like daycares or other things that are needed. But providing incentives using carrots to help maximize the potential of some of these sites. And along with that would be looking at your codes for enabling missing middle housing. That could be everything from eighty backyard ADUs to, you know, various kinds of attached products. If, you know, if the delivering single-family homes affordably is never going to happen, it's just because of the cost of land. Making the total cost of ownership or of rent to somebody, the way to do it is to have smaller housing units themselves. And so having different product types and sizes and configurations that can better match up with your workforce needs and the incomes of those workforces is something that can help pick away at that problem. But I will say in the next set of recommendations, those are sort of working away at the edges to do kind of a big move in terms of large-scale housing production. We really need to be looking at the ACI. And we know that there's, you know, significant barriers. There's a physical barrier of the railroad, but there's also utility issues and lots of analysis and investigation that would need to happen in terms of how that would be phased in, how you where utilities would go, how they would be paid for, shared with developers and the utilities themselves. And but that is the sort of the sing, that's the, you know, single largest place where you can at at a meaningful scale accomplish housing that can start to address this, you know, huge demand and backlog. The way to do it is through specific area planning. So a lot of the projects that I've worked on in Oregon where where I live, when cities are expanding in Oregon, we have urban growth boundaries, similar but different to the ACIs. They do concept planning where which is very long-range planning, working with the property owners, but involving the development community, working with engineers and transportation planners to really have, and the community especially, to have to develop a vision and a plan and framework plan for how that area will will annex, get zoned and develop over time. And what we find is that that provides a level of certainty to the development community that maybe without without any solutions out there for how are we going to cross the railroad? Or how are utilities going to be served? How are they going to be paid for and phased over time? Nobody's willing to make the first move and get ready for development. And so that's really the role of a city is to start building that framework, building those partnerships with landowners and start visioning with the community as to what that area can become. And so, wow, we put that pretty strongly as a recommendation. And then that gets can be incorporated into your comprehensive planning process. And then finally, and I'm not going to get into these because I'm not an engineer, but we did hear through a lot of our research about the utility and infrastructure issues around your water and stormwater and wastewater and the inter-jurisdictional nature of that, working with your neighboring communities, that there are some very real issues that need to be addressed and solved that, you know, not just for the ACI area, but for your infill and growth areas as well. And so we had several recommendations to, you know, continue to build partnerships at a regional level to solve those issues. And with that, that's the last slide of my presentation. So can take the rest of your time to answer any questions. Ted's on the phone as well with he's my data analyst who put together a lot of the research. And we really appreciate your questions and I've enjoyed working with you over the course of the past nine months.
Thank you, Chris. Likewise. And thank you, Ted. I have a couple of questions. First, you had mentioned, you know, obviously, we need to, you know, there's there's a you've identified the need for affordable housing, the need for workforce housing. Are you able to put numbers to that?
In terms of the
Number of units that that, you know, you you've got overall projections for, you know, ten years into the future, we're going to
Yeah. So if I if I skip back to so you'll see in these tables and charts, the totals that I circled are actually made up of totals within different income brackets. What we did not do, and that would be the work of further work down the road, would be doing feasibility analysis around, you know, what does a development pro forma look like? And how big is the gap in today's economics of delivering units that are affordable at each of those ranges? But we did kind of in the conversation that you had with Ted just a few minutes ago, these these charts here do break it down by those.
Great. And and I just want to kind of underscore the point that we was sort of inferred from our earlier discussion. But that when you, you know, project that land that's going to be needed to meet that anticipated growth, that's based on our current land use, you know, profile or like how 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 we currently satisfy housing, right? But as we move towards, you know, and we're forced to move to a situation where we have a different kind of land use policy because we just simply don't have land anymore, right? So we're not going to have a bunch of single-family, you know, large lot neighborhoods, probably not even going to have very many single-family neighborhoods at all, right? They're they're going to be less and less going forward. So the types of land use, the ways that we meet that housing demand are going to change into the future. So so that projection of we need, you know, one hundred and fifty acres to meet demand, it's, you know, presumably could be less than that because presumably we're going to implement some policy changes to allow for greater density, perhaps encourage more attached housing, that that kind of product, right? So am I correct here in my assumption?
Yeah, you're correct. And I I would say part of that conversation would be that feasibility analysis of, you know, as you're it's everything's a moving target. Yeah, you know, with construction costs and land costs, but it's, you know, meeting the the, you know, providing new different housing types, maybe different densities and attached housing and so on. But then looking at, you know, what does it cost to deliver those? And and does that meet the market? You know, the market going to buy those units at those prices? And then also looking at you're 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 in a regional market. And, you know, some of those, you know, that large lot, single family, you're not going to capture. They're going to go somewhere in the county and
Right.
It's just the way it is. So the answer is basically yes.
Yeah.
But it but it's definitely a nuanced conversation when you get into the financial feasibility and which is constantly in flux.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Chris, it's been about five months since the last time you guys presented to us. And five months ago, you used the same phrase, the pending recession. I'm wondering if, I think we've been using that phrase for well over a year now. I'm wondering if you guys, as the economics expert, have any further insight into whether that pending recession is is just a boogeyman used for electoral purposes by particular parties? Or is that something that we should still be worrying about? And if so, like, what are the macroeconomic spillovers onto like the local development industry? And we see seven hundred and eighty-three units in the pipeline or something. In your experience or what what maybe you're seeing in other parts of the the country where perhaps there has been more of a slowdown than here locally? What prospect does the pending recession, if it's still out there, have on the fulfillment of that? Almost eight hundred units that are currently in our pipeline? Because I look at that and I say, well, we we're already making a huge step, a huge progress towards your projected fulfilling the projected demand for our ten-year horizon.
Yeah, I've got a couple of thoughts and I'll and I'll let Ted hop in. I in terms of the big question, is there really going to be a recession? I'm I'm probably a little more of an optimist than than I than maybe Ted is, just because this the the unemployment remains so low and job growth and consumer demand is still so high that that doesn't sound like a recession. It would be a very quick flipping on a dime if we are going to go into recession next year. What we are seeing, though, in a lot of markets is we are seeing the housing production slow down. And we're seeing, in talking to developers, they've told me that the sources of financing are are shrinking. And so the ability to get their, because I'm sure a lot of those proposed projects in the pipeline, they're still working on their financing. And if that financing dries up or there or it becomes harder to get or more expensive because interest rates are higher, that could very easily make some of those disappear. Ted, I don't know if you have anything you want to add about recessions?
No, I'm actually less pessimistic than I usually am about it. The I I think that there's there's got to be some housing price correction, just because it's it's unsustainable in a lot of ways. But there's been so much. It it's going to be more of a correction where we're falling back to where we should have been. I I think there's been just such a steep rise over the last two or three years in prices that I think some people got lucky and benefited a lot when they maybe shouldn't have. And we're going to erase some of that. And I don't think we're as, just in terms of financial markets, we're not as bundled into relying on prices to to be where they are as we were in oh eight, oh nine. And so I'm not, you know, like you said, that the job, that the unemployment is still so low and the inflation is rough, but I I just don't see it being as bad as as oh eight, oh nine.
And and I was hoping this chart, I flipped back to this chart because one of the comments Ted made back in, I think, in our July presentation was Sandpoint's growth has been very lumpy historically and that the the pace of growth that you you've had boom times and you've had, you know, stagnant times. And everything always kind of equalizes. And so, you know, and thinking about our ten and certainly twenty-year forecast, there's going to be some troughs in there. You know, whether it's next year or it's going to be in five years is harder to say. But that's why, but I think just based on historical precedence of your past trends, the the pipeline that you're seeing now is definitely looking like one of those peaks.
I did have a, this might be more of a request for advice for us elected officials up here. You you guys have, I'm sure, worked with dozens of communities that have faced similar challenges. You mentioned, you know, the challenge, some of the challenges, including the railroad tracks, the infrastructure. But another big challenge is the the will of the people. And we hear all the time about this fear of too much growth, too much development. High higher density is a bad word in this town, building heights, a bad word in this town, or sprawl into the rural areas. It's like sacrilege to talk about that up here. So what I'm asking for advice from you on is what what have you seen in other communities that have failed to failed to adapt to the growth that is inevitable in those communities? I mean, what are the costs to the people who live here today if we don't rise to the to this challenge?
You know, I'm thinking, I'm looking at Ted on the screen. Ted used to live in Colorado and has a lot of experience in some of the Colorado resort towns. Might have some anecdotes from that. I I think as far as, but before he jumps in, if he has something to say, I would say the how to do it right is to humanize it a little bit. And and it's not just economics and development and land sales and things like that. But it's but it's telling the story along the lines of, you know, your restaurant staff that you can't hire or you have to cut back hours because you can't staff two shifts and things like that, that and and, you know, it's not even just, you know, restaurant staff, but, you know, teachers and police officers and telling the story about how they're even challenged to live and work in this community can help explain, you know, help tell the consequences of, you know, taking no action to address the issue. And then I think there's, you know, a million cities in Colorado that you could point to that says, if you don't address it, this is what you'll look like in ten years.
Right.
It is it. It is a very tough challenge because there are physical aspects to Sandpoint that are just flat out desirable. And you and the supply of places where you can put people is limited. And so you have to grow as smart as you can and make density palatable. It it is a, you know, just closing the doors on development and growth is a recipe for just really runaway housing prices like the Aspens and Tellurides and and even Boulders of the world where you, it is very difficult to find somebody that knows how to change a tire or, you know, make a latte because that you can't afford to pay those people to live close enough to where you are. And if you want to maintain a sort of a real economy and a decent quality of life, it you just have to increasingly find ways to make density sane and palatable and and just grow as as smart as possible. But there's not, there's unfortunately not a real silver bullet to the supply, demand and desirability of place issues that you're facing.
And I would say, you know, urban design and architecture matters, you know? So that's that's part of it is things need to look nice and be contextual. I know, you know, one bad project that's designed poorly or ages badly is going to, people remember that and will make your life difficult for many years to come. And so, you know, be thoughtful to its impact on on cost and feasibility. But but thinking about, you know, place making, and I know you're doing that with your design competition and and other things. That's important to the community, but that also can give assurance to the community members that, you know, yes, there is going to be density. Yes, there is going to be growth, but it's going to fit well and and look good. And I guess the other thing I would say, you know, a part of why Sandpoint is so expensive and has grown so much is because there aren't the world, the United States has not created very many sandpoints. And, you know, working with your other communities around the state and, you know, to help them do better too. It's not necessarily Sandpoint's job to do that, but I think that's part of the part of what we're seeing is that, you know, great places are relatively few and far between. And so what the people of means who gravitate towards those don't have a lot of choices. So they come to places like Sandpoint to get it. And if they had other choices, you know, around Idaho and around Washington or wherever, that can help to spread out some of that demand. That's a, that's a very big philosophical way of looking at it, but it's something I believe in.
Sure. Another question, Chris, and maybe it's for you, Ted. But it looks like for your 10 year projection, at least on residential demand, you're using an annual rate of 2.4%. And can you speak to the confidence in that number? Are you, is that like a, you know, 60% confidence or, you know? I, I guess I'm, I'm wondering kind of, and, and I see your sort of what the historical range has been, but it does seem like, not just through the pandemic, but really over the last number of years, we've seen greater and greater, you know, population increase. So would it be, you know, how conceivable is it that that could be, you know, three and a half percent or, you know, something crazy like that? Can you speak to your confidence there on that?
Yeah, definitely. I'll let Ted do the bulk of the answering on that because that was something that we debated and discussed a lot early on in the project of, because 2.4% is a big number actually. And, and so I'll, yeah, I'll let Ted talk a little bit about how we got to that number and how we feel about it.
And I, I think that I'll skip to just sort of the main answer is you will not see, you have a 0% chance of seeing smooth 2.4% growth for the next 10 or 20 years. It's going to be some years of, of four and some years of zero. And that's just the way it, it works with, you know, we have, it, it's dangerous to project off of a boom period. And there are people that are always pushing for that. And it's just over the long haul, you are probably going to be close to your historical rates or, or to what your trajectory looks like. It should be, and it just won't, it, it won't be that smooth. It's a little smoother on the residential side usually than, than on the commercial side, but, but multifamily particularly is a on and off type situation. Everyone, not everyone, but so many communities we're working with are just seeing off the chart years for 2021 and some in about half, keeping it going into 2022, but 2021 was just a perfect storm year for a lot of places. And it's just probably not a good idea to, to project too much off of that.
Thank you. And I would just add to that, you know, we're doing 10 and 20 year forecasting here. But you'll revisit this plan in, you know, I'd recommend like at least five years, you know, to adjust it, adjust it to market. See what got built from that pipeline, see where the economy is. And it's always, it's a role, planning is a rolling iterative exercises, you know? So we, we have good confidence in the numbers and the, in the forecast, but we, like Ted said, we also know it's not going to be right. Yeah.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chris and Ted. We really appreciate the time that you've taken, the recommendations. The recommendations seem very attainable over time with a lot of hard work. Last week I was able to sit with Professor Stephen Peterson, Professor of Economics from the University of Idaho, who did a housing and economic study very similar to yours for Cootney County. And the data can basically be overlaid on top of yours and looks very similar. But there's only so much we can do as a city. And when I started looking at some of these numbers, the median housing prices have increased over 120% in Coeur d'Alene, Post Falls, Hayden, Rathdrom, Hauser Lake, Spirit Lake, Bayview, Cootney County. Over 120% from 2016 to 2021. Furthermore, we're seeing this on a wider scale throughout the entire nation right now. And the cities are having issues with, you've got less than 60% occupancy in a lot of the office space that happen in downtown corridors and you're not getting those people that are working from home. They don't work there. They're not spending money at local restaurants and bars and shopping in those downtown corridors anymore. And the cities are starting to feel the pain of not receiving that tax income in. So it seems to me from, from looking at the data, this is, this seems to be an issue. And maybe you could advise us, how do we, or what should we be asking for from our state legislators to come in and help with affordable housing in terms of Idaho? And then potentially more, you hit the nail on the head when you said that you've got developers who are slowing down because of the interest rates right now. Right? How, what should we be pushing for on a federal level as well? When you start to take a look at like the federal home loans banks, the 11 that loan money to our community lenders and can loan money guaranteed backed by the government, right? To incentivize developers to come into communities like ours and start building the type of products that we need them to build for our communities and for the growth that we're seeing. Is there, it's a broad, broad question, but it really, going through all the data, I really, this popped out to me more than anything is that the state and the feds should be in this and involved. And whatever we're doing right now is obviously not working or is working too slowly. So are there, are there programs that we've done in the past? Are there, I mean, just looking at some of this data right now, there's Professor Peterson says, we, we have a desk, a deficit of up to eight and a half million units for housing across the country right now. There seems like there should be some bigger forces at play.
Yeah, that definitely, I mean, it's a, it's a problem that's way beyond the scale of any particular city to solve. And I think you kind of alluded to it. It's, it's multi-pronged the, how you solve it. There's money certainly can be brought to the table and the idea of working with your local, local lending institutions to maybe create a funding pool or a loan pool for particular types of housing for your local development community. That's a great idea. So there's a, I think there's an organizational deficit of, and that's part of the recommendation around how creating a housing authority is that there, you need to, people need to get together and plan this stuff out because it's, it is so complex and regional. And, you know, some of the, the regulatory stuff is, you know, other states like California and Oregon and, and Washington are, are the, the state legislatures are taking on more of a mandate role for, you know, loosening up single family zones for duplexes and, and 80s and things, you know? Idaho's different and it's, you know, it's a, that becomes a political conversation, but there is definitely a role for the states at the state level to be involved, both from the, from the planning side to the funding side. And it just needs to be a priority.
Second question here, there, there are a number of home buyers still left in the market, folks that have sold their houses in big cities. Sold for quite a bit of money and they're sitting on that money right now and they're a pretty savvy buyer, right? They're paying for data from MLS or from Zillow right now. They're looking in our region. Are there some outliers that might be showing that our, our housing is much more expensive? And in, I'll give you an example, maybe the Idaho non-disclosure, price non-disclosure. Does that have some effect one way or another? We're seeing the term, I don't know if you're familiar with the term zombie housing, but we're seeing houses that go up on Zillow accidentally get priced at $370 million. The following day they go back and the price has been reduced to $370,000. So they trip the algorithm and pop up higher on the, on the listing as most price reduced or best price reduced. And then that, that house sells as a non-disclosed price. So we know that it sold somewhere between the listing price and $370 million. And if you get enough of those, would that be enough to trip the data and raise everything up? So that we see some of these savvy buyers in and around the community, look at North Idaho and go, holy smokes. That's too, that's too darn expensive. I can go over to Montana for the average median prices, 500,000 versus 700,000. Are there, are, do, do you guys see or did you guys find or have you found anything in the state of Idaho that might be tripping some of the data that we're giving off right now?
Nothing specific comes to mind. I don't know if Ted had, I will say the non-disclosure aspect makes our job as analysts difficult, but, because getting good data is hard to come by. But Ted, I don't know if you have anything to add about kind of gaming the system or?
I wish people would not do that.
Job security.
Yep.
Keep you coming back to answer our questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
All right, Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Thank you, Chris.
Appreciate it.
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. It was a great report. Thanks for the work, guys.
Thanks for correcting it. I try not to edit when I read, but I can't.
I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution acknowledging and accepting the city of Sandpoint Housing and Economic Analysis. Is there a motion?
Go move.
Second.
You moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a real call vote.
Councilor Dick?
Yes.
Councilor McAllister? Yes. Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Sprow?
Yes.
Councilor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is an update on the Carousel of Smiles. Reno and Clay Hutchinson are here. If you'd like to, please come to the podium and let us know what's going on.
We're so excited to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the council for giving us the opportunity and your time this evening to present to you and the public an update on the progress of the Carousel of Smiles for Sandpoint Project. We also want to thank Jennifer and the staff for all the help and assistance they've given us in the past few years. And we've also just learned recently on Good Authority that geese really hate carousel music. So maybe that helps.
Just have to check here and figure out how to get on here.
So tonight we want to tell you a story. One that's really about community collaboration and magic. It's a dream sparked by tragedy. And a mayor's initiative. And let's see.
So it follows a, really a simple directive, which is to get the public involved. And the public did get involved quite heavily. And it was a, when that City Beach Master Plan process went on, great kudos to the staff and, and to the consultants for getting that level of public involvement. And of course we had the carousel, which also is a magical item that got an awful lot of the care, the public confused about joining us in Reno's vision and participating in the city-led process. So it's here in Sandpoint, we have all the ingredients we need for success with this project. And we're really excited to show you, share with you what, what, what's been going on. These renderings are fresh off the designer's board.
So the carrot, so the carousel is a centerpiece of this project. It's only a part of a much bigger story. But carousels are magic and they have a power that brings people together. This quote of Tobin Frayley sums up why carousels bring a smile to just about everyone, except for maybe geese.
So the story really begins in 1973 in Butte, Montana. This is where Reno grew up. And she grew up going to a very magical place, the Columbia Gardens. It was one of the first parks set up by the Copper Kings to kind of mitigate some of the harshness of Butte. And it had gardens and pavilions and a few rides and of course a carousel. In 1973, that carousel tragically burned down mysteriously. And this is tragedies what sparked in Reno, a dream to one day find a golden age carousel and bring it to her hometown and restore that magic. Sandpoint's been her hometown since 1981. So the chance of finding a golden age historic carousel in 2000 was pretty dim. The collector trade started in the seventies, but by sheer happenstance, we did find, we were told about one. And it last operated in 1952 at the Hutchinson County Fair in Kansas. And it had been stored in two trailers and left at a farmer's field outside of Kansas, Kansas, and had been sitting there for 48 years. And just based on a few photos, Reno said, you know, we've got to restore, we've got to, we've got to preserve this carousel. I was about to go to auction. So we did manage to purchase it, keeping it from going to auction. And we moved it to the storage barn in New York State, still in its low boy, in, in its trailers. And it stayed in this barn for 16 years. And we had a lot of now what questions during that time. But fortunately, there is an association called the National Carousel Association, NCA. And their purpose is to help projects and restore and maintain carousels and bring them back. And so we realized pretty quick, we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. There was expertise out there that have done these projects, not a lot of them, but have done them. And so we knew we had resources to go to. And one of the biggest resources happens to be in Spokane, Washington. She was the president for 13 years. She's the curator of the Louvre Carousel in 1908 intact carousel. And it's from talking with her and other experts that we realized what you do with a carousel in this, in this modern age. Guiding premise is you support your community's economic and its development and its lifestyle. Find out what your city needs and work with that. Carousels need the synergy of, of activity and community around it. They don't do very well. They were never intended to be by themselves. They need that synergy. And with the magic that they create, they can create that synergy. So in 2016, when the mayor announced that initiative, we realized that that was an opportunity that we could come and bring this carousel here and participate in the ideas that we were pretty sure were going to come forth. And again, that good governance provided us with a simple directive, get that public involved. And so we loaded them up on low boy trailers. We started our first campaign here, press campaign, the ponies are coming. And that's where we introduced it to the community by unloading these trailers for the first time in 64 years. And we did that at a public event in what is now the Matchwood Brewery. It was a extraordinary event. We had never unloaded anything under the trailers in the 16 years that we had it. You only get to do that once. So it was the first time we got to wander on the horses and really see what they were. First time we got to lay out all the pieces of the mechanism, we realized we really did have everything, including two chariots. So we had no idea we were in those trailers. And the rounding boards, very whimsical pieces of the carousel. And a couple of crates of interior arc panels that we hadn't seen, no one had seen in 64 years. And the all important sign, which let us know this in fact was an Alan Herschel carousel and not one of the other four different companies that he was involved in. So in the golden age, they had about 6,000 carousels, a lot of carousels created. And not very many of them are left in this country, less than 200. And fewer of those are intact with their mechanism and their horses. And we now have one of those in Sandpoint. So a year later in December 2017, we were really ready to unload, unveil this project to the, to, to the public. And we did it by assembling the unrestored carousel at the fairgrounds. And having a curtain draw.
That's awesome.
We did that a couple of times over, over the weekend. It was a very magical moment for us. And so the assembled carousel has 36 horses. They all go up and down, it's 40 feet in diameter. This is a substantial carousel. This is not a kid's carousel. This is a real carousel that was designed to be traveling and was also designed to be in a permanent home. Smaller than Louvre Carousel in Spokane, that's, that was always designed to be stationary in a park. So this one is a little smaller, but it's still a pretty magnificent machine. And here is the catalog confirmation that someone sent us a year or so later that confirms it's an Alan Herschel number two special. So in 2008, So in 2018, we really started the restoration. We did it with, we do it with three main groups. The first one, the Gear and Grease Gang came about when we wanted to assemble this thing because we had to clean the, clean the bearings of all the grease and put new grease in it. The guy on the right wandered in and said, I do grease. It was like, sure, a lot of people do grease. He goes, no, I do historic grease. He lives in this county. His business is making historic grease for old machines. Go figure. But that's, that's passion for you. And the other guys do store steam locomotives. We have an amazing group of people that came out of the woodwork to help us assemble this thing and are, and are working with the, with the mechanism. So some of it is pretty big. Some of it's pretty gnarly. You know, there's lots of, lots of lead paint, lots of other stuff. And we really have the support of many businesses in the community that are helping with this. Without these businesses, these guys are rock stars. This would be a much tougher task. And they're all willing just to, just to throw in their little piece or their big piece and get that job done. And one of the interesting things about the Gear and Grease Gang is they say, ah, the horses, but it's the mechanism that's really cool.
No, the, the horses are really cool. So we're working on bringing back the beauty and integrity of these 100-year-old carvings. They're all hand carved. Each one is different. And the worst part for me is that they have to cut the heads off. I still can't be there when they take the heads off these animals.
So we call this group the Godfather Squad. And we started, we started with wood restoration workshops because there are some specific techniques that we, that we employ. And, and after assembling a bunch of groups, we just have teams and we, we got to work. And the work really consists of disassembling them, taking all the metal out. And, you know, repairing all the extremities, regluing, doweling them. We don't have a lot of, of new pieces we have to carve, but we do have resident dentists. And then the process, the, the micro finishing process, which is much more akin to the automotive process, where you go back numerous times and see all the stuff that you missed the first time. There's about 400 hours, man, person hours to get one of these horses from the condition they're in, you know, before they're ready to go to the painters. And this is really where the magic with these horses come back to life.
This shows, this, this slide shows the stages of restoration. And the woman that you see in the forefront there is Betty Largent. And she's, as Clay said, has just been instrumental in helping us understand the methodologies and what we need to do on the wood side and the paint side to put these horses back into a working condition. Special painting techniques.
Yeah, these, these horses are going back on a working machine. So it's a lot different than if they're going to be in somebody's living room. And it's a constant learning process. We have a great group of painters and, and they all, all learn from each other and pass ideas around and ideas. It's done as a group approach. So we don't just give a horse out to a painter and they do what they want to do and, and bring it back. It really, just about everybody paints, paints a little bit on each horse, you know, or, or in small teams. And they do come up with individual specialties and concentrate just on, on what they do. So there's the opportunity for these painters to take ownership with aspects of these horses. The detailed painting is just exceptional. But it does follow a master layout and color wheel. This is about Reno's agonizes over and has for a long time. And because there is a methodology and it dates back to the original methodology of, of when they created these machines. And sometimes you just have to paint different things to get it right. There's some of the incredible detail. This is one of the latest horses that's gotten completed. That's a painted eye. Exceptional work. Artists that have working with us are just extraordinary. So here's a picture of the first 18 that are all completed in paint. We have another six, eight, I think, that are in various stages of process. And some of these are at the bank. There are four of them at the bank, Mountain West Bank and Sandpoint Branch and a few others around town. And we'll be, we'll be starting to show these off around town. This is a fun one. This is the Kennewick Carousel, realized the exceptional nature of our talented group and asked us to paint an animal for them. They had carved a rabbit. So this came up here and it's an example of some of the incredible work that we're now being known for, that Sandpoint's being known for. And here's another example of some of the incredible work of the painters. History is so important and we want to keep the history alive. There's so many carousels around the country, they kind of forget about the history. So they view it as a ride, but this is much more than a ride. This is a connection from the past to our present. And the history is rich. The carousel history, we could talk about that forever. There's so much to that. And it is, it, it really stems back to that quote that Tobin Frayley had. Alan Herschel was a very prolific carousel carver. Actually, he ran a company. He didn't do much of the carving. He had guys like Ward Oliver do that. And when we got some press, we, the great grandson of Ward Oliver called us up to give us some information about who he is, because everyone thinks, oh, Alan Herschel. Well, no one really knows too much about all the guys that actually did the work. So he's the gentleman that created the Four Winds faces that are on a carousel. He loved Greek mythology and Western art. So he created an Americanized version from that Greek mythology. And they're cast heads and they're on a lot of Alan Herschel machines. Most people don't even know that they're Four Winds, but we were told that story. So we've restored all these, all these, all the faces, all the scroll pieces and the wooden boards. And this is now what they kind of are starting to look like. And we're doing a departure that we don't think any other carousel has done. We're painting every horse, every face rather individually. They all have their individual character. Most of the times you'll take a Northern Viking and all the castings will be painted the same way. We've got 14 very unique interpretations of these faces. It's an extraordinary product. Another really cool thing is inside the trailer that was unloaded for the first time, were two crates of interior paintings. You always have interior paintings on a carousel, but you almost never have them signed by an artist. This was signed by L Wagner Davis. And this 70 years of degraded varnish makes them all some possible to see.
I would love to have a conversation with her.
This is her. And she was a well-known tattoo artist, a carnival artist. Her parents were even more famous. The very famous tattooed man and woman from the 1900s. Her father was the most marked up man in America at one point. So this is a project that is, we're, we're doing a little bit of a side project, but it's connected as to the Wyeth Foundation Art, various museums, including the South Street Seaport in New York and, and others around the country. So it really is an unusual project. So we're having these restored. They have to be restored professionally. It's painstaking. And so far, four of those have been restored.
The reach that these panels are getting nationwide is, has just been mind blowing.
So we actually have two of them on exhibit in, in Albany, at the Historic Carousel Museum in Albany. And we have two more that will be going in the next couple of months to the New England Carousel Museum in New York. And we are working on a longer term exhibit with the South Street Seaport Museum with all of her panels, because they have her father's tattoo equipment designs and his, and his journals from when he was a merchant seaman. So there's connect connectivity into various subcultures of America, the tattoo and the merchant sea, sea world. And one interesting thing, the tattoo shop down the street, down in the same building, those guys wandered in and says, oh, we know her. And we know her dad's. We use their tattoo designs.
They brought me a book with a lot of her designs in it. It's really fabulous.
So as her panels gallivant around the country, we're creating a different project for our interior panels. We call it the art panel project. So we're going to remake those panels. A couple of years ago, we called for submissions and we got quite a variety of, of artists that submitted a, you know, a painting, their idea for, for that. And the, the types of submissions were so different, so unique that we decided we have to keep this open as a curatable art exhibition space. Why are we just going to put 14 panels and have it on the carousel, which they all do? I mean, this, this slide, that one on the right is quilt art. The one on the left is finger paint technique. Here's one that just came in last month. So there's such a variety. And, and when you keep it open, that expands the possibilities of theme groups. You could do a school group or do a thing. You could do tattoo art, you could do quilt art. The, the ability to create any kind of exhibit you want is, is, is wide open. It's a very exciting part of what we're, we're trying to do here. So when this carousel is restored, it will be an important part of the National Collection of Safe, Safe Golden Age Carousels. And there's a, quite a network around that keeps track of all that. So far, we have well over 50 volunteers and well over 10,000 hours. We're keeping track of it. We haven't really told them, but it's, it's a huge effort. The volunteers have just been rock stars. So we couldn't do this without our volunteers. And, and the results are, are well, you'll be seeing them out around town. They're pretty stunning. Couple of years ago, Yurda Gertson, when she was with the Idaho Commission Arts, you know, made the comment that this may well be the largest public art, art project in the state of Idaho. So now we start coming into the location after restoration. Where are we going to put this thing? And it's been an evolving process. So we started in 2017, 18 with our Imagine campaign, took the existing building, dropped another building over the top of that, added in a few longstanding ideas that people have talked about for years in, in town. A few holiday lights, you know, holiday magic. And that was really to get people excited by this. But to put some context to it, we, we took the Google map of the city beach, put some references. That was the 60-foot circle is the old waiting pool down there. So people could get a sense of how big this thing or how not so big this thing, you know, might be. So when the public really got to participate in the, in this, in the, in the Parks Master Plan, which as I said, was a tremendous effort, you guys did a rock star job getting the public involved. It was a lot of fun putting the dots around, but numerous times the public had to, had the input on all those plans. So we ended up potentially in two spots on those plans. So af, soon after that was adopted, we came here in June of 20 to chat with the, the council for the first time. Given overview of the project, really talk about public-private partnerships, what it might be leased, might look like. And we really wanted to put across that this project being a 501(c)(3), we fully expect that no taxpayer funds are going to be needed. We're not going to be requesting those. We should be able to pull this and we're confident that we can, we can make this all happen with private sector donations and grants. So we had our first meeting in March 21 with, with Jennifer Stapleton and Kim Woodruff. And in that meeting, they strongly encouraged us to consider the Sandpoint site.
Sand Creek site.
I'm sorry, the Sand Creek site. And I have to say, that was kind of a, kind of a yikes moment. We'd been so focused on the city beach, our blinders were on. But I gotta say, Jennifer and Kim both had some very good rationale reasons for us to consider the other site. So we did that. It was cool. It has some, a lot of history in there. So we started looking at the site, which we had never really considered before. So in the summer, obviously it has a pleasant view and the winter, not so much. This is March, so we could already see that there's tremendous quantities of mud surrounding the site and for most of the year. We did a Google Earth, dropped in that little building, amassing study, maybe thought about a deck on there, analyzed the path that, that, that clearly needs to stay. It's a great amenity. And decided that, yeah, we, you know, we could drop some interesting stuff in there and then maybe the site would work. So we went back for our second meeting. And after a little more conversation, told Jennifer we were in for the site. And I do give Jennifer 100% credit for taking the blinders off. This for us, what we're trying to do is a much better site. And it supports the town and, and the objectives that, that we're trying to support in a, in a much better way. This is, this could be a really fun site. It was also fun to see that our little rendering was used in a staff presentation to the zoning commission, not too long after. So when we're trying to find the particular setbacks and other conditions, it was kind of discovered, not kind of, it was discovered that ITD still owns this parcel. It was, there was an agreement in 2015. And so one more thing that got dropped on Jennifer's desk that she then had to go deal with, an unexpected thing. I don't think anybody realized that that hadn't been followed on with or, or back from them. But she's on that and, you know, that, that's in process and it's going to happen. But I threw this drawing up from that agreement because this to me was fascinating. That whole red line up there is the repairing area, the wetlands that was created probably by a lot of people with a lot of effort. But it was adopted here in that 2015 by Sandpoint. And those wetlands are remaining into perpetuity. You had that trail that is also part of that thing. This is a great amendment, amenity for Sandpoint. And I don't think sometimes it gets enough conversation while we're talking about what to do with all this thing. This, there, there's a lot of work. It's a great amenity. And I have to say that Mayor, you were on the council at that time and so were you, Councilor, when you guys accepted something. This is good work. There's no reason to reimagine this part of Sandpoint. This, this works great, in my opinion. So we did our surveys. And these are the setback restrictions, 70 feet from the bypass, 25 feet from the high water, and the various other FEMA, all the numbers that you need to understand for trying to figure out what you're really doing here. So in October of 21, we had a pretty substantive meeting with many people from the, from the city staff and went over those various codes. And one of the key ones was Darren Fluke relayed that this would come under the heading of an entertainment complex and be able to use the city beach parking for its parking requirement. And a few days later, Jennifer May presented to the council that the, the plan to change and a little bit of that change with that the carousel was going to relocate to Sand Creek. So we did our preliminary design work. Our slot opened up in July 22. We got that preliminary design through September 22. And this is basically an overhead rendering of the, of the whole building. And what this is is a lot of times people consider this to be about a 30% involvement. It doesn't really have the, the texture, what the finishes are on the outside. It's really a massive study with some well thought out space usages and how does it really fit into the, into the site with all the restrictions. And, and and the uses that are in there, it's really designed to be a multi-use building. So it highlights the carousel, yes, but there are a lot of other very functional, flexible spaces in there that operate with, you know, in concert with a carousel or independently. It's also been designed so that for whatever reason, the carousel needed to leave, which is possible, who knows what's going to happen decades down the line, that no one's going to walk into this building and go, hey, gee, what happened to the carousel? This building is, is designed to be an independent architectural statement as well. And it connects to, it connects to the Sand Creek and has a tremendous number of, of gathering spaces inside it. The site plan, we've deliberately left the 25-foot setback alone, even though we proposed some ideas. Those are super conceptual in nature because that area is, is, you know, it's going to involve some further discussion, much broader discussion, as is the parking. You know, we play around with Photoshop, move parking lots around and count the spaces. We can keep the same number of spaces, might even be able to add a couple. But it's going to involve that debate that you always have with parking. It's, it's pavement versus green space and, and what makes sense. So that's part of a larger discussion that, that's going to tie in. And I know you all are working on, on a lot of that kind of stuff. So we tried to pay attention to fit into the various comprehensive plans and plans that have been going on. Some great work here in the city. You have to have that roadmap to know where you're going. And I think we're creating some pretty good ones. You know, and we do hit a couple of big ones. We do support the arts and we do support the desire for, for year-round activity, arts and cultural activities. So we kind of thought at this point, we would be able to come in here and seek some preliminary approvals for what we're doing. Obviously, any final approvals, we need to get that deed and understand where that deed is and work up a lease and things like that. But in the last couple of months, it seems that there's some more planning initiatives that are, that are underway. The design challenge has been announced. There's been, and that may, looks like it may take on some of the parking challenges with the, with the parking lot in the middle of town, whether that's a multi-use, multi-story building. And possibly some other things, all kind of sounds like it's heading towards a, a master plan for the, for the town of Sandpoint. It may be a design plan. We're not really sure. But also in the discussions, and we recognize that the city staff has been extraordinarily busy. They always are. I'm not sure there's ever a time when they're not busy. But it seems a little bit to us that we're back to being a conceptual idea. And, and there's no pathway that we know of right now to seek that kind of approval. But what we really wanted to do this evening was to just show you where we are and what we're doing so that when you all have to make the decisions on all this kind of stuff, you know, you know what we're doing. So what we've done in the meantime is branding our efforts as Imagine 2.0. And it's a little bit halting this video, but. So a little deeper tour. This is the entryway that would come from the parking lot. And as you go into the building, the carousel has a pretty big foyer around it or rotunda. That area is to, you know, it's a flex space. You know, there's a lot of different ways people are gonna come and want to use this carousel, and you can configure that space to accommodate whatever whatever is going on. This highlighted area is a gallery event wing. Think of kind of like a thirty-by-ninety tent and really set up to host gallery exhibits, think museum gallery, not sales events, though there certainly would be a component of that. And just about any kind of, you know, some traveling exhibits could come here. There's all kinds of exhibits. We don't really have a space where we can host those kind of museum-type type exhibits. The outside decks as a rendering of what those outside decks do. So you're bringing the inside to the outside and really trying to get people, places where they can gather and and communicate each other. We have a second story on here, which is pretty unusual for a carousel. It was inspired by the historic Hippodrome in Santa Monica. And those upper spaces create some other flexible uses, a great space for birthday parties, smaller meetings. The other wing, possibly artist resident studio, maybe a carousel repair studio, that always makes a good exhibit, a reading room, and other other types of exhibits, and possibly a sculpture garden could connect to the outside deck and into the grounds. And there's the rendering of a possible upper outside deck.
So in the in the summertime, these things around here to take care of themselves, but.
It's the winter that we need to focus on.
So I, my imagination goes nuts, and I think of what could happen in our shoulder season and winter seasons surrounding a community building like this, and we could have Halloween at the carousel. We could have a Thanksgiving food drive. Holiday magic. Wintertime activities. So we have an underutilized location. A desire for year-round activities. Add a few community-inspired ideas. And a few more. When the private sector, community, and government call us together for a common objective, true magic happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Clay and Reno. That was a presentation. Does council have any questions?
What, those solar panels?
They were, yeah.
Excellent.
It's a.
It's perfectly oriented for solar. It's southwest facing that particular roof line, so.
That's one of the things that inspired that roof roof design. I mean, solar obviously is a is a big buzzword, and it actually works.
Right.
And and it's, we know of two carousel projects around the country, one in Seattle, one in Buffalo, that power their carousel totally from their solar panels. So, yeah, I think we should be able to get Tesla one of the groups. Donate their panels. It'd be, it'd be pretty cool.
They sponsored the roof at the carousel in Buffalo that's just opened in the last year, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys. I mean, your commitment, your passion is really obvious. Apologize for my voice. I I do have a question. You you commented on how you've, one moment. Feel like you're back at the conceptual phase now, but let's say you were at a phase where, or the city were at a phase where we could, you know, accommodate this right now. Where are you in terms of funding? If if you did have the opportunity to, you know, break ground in the next year or two, is that something you could realistically do financially?
We set this up in in two phases. So the funding, which is mostly our volunteer labors for the restoration, we have very well in hand. But we cannot go out to fundraise for the building until we can tell donors that we have an absolute locked insight. You know, this is not gonna happen with with small donations. We're, you know, small donations are an important part, as important as the big donations, because that gets people taking ownership of the whole project. But this is gonna be a substantial building, and we go to big donors, we better have all those checkboxes checked, or we've lost them and wasted that opportunity. So and also, you know, I don't want to go to a donor and say, oh, I think we have a spot, or tell them we have a spot, and we don't. That's not, that's not kosher. So we really have to have to be in concert with the city. Donors have to know that we're locked in, the city's on board, and we've we've noodled through all the various things we have to do before we can, we can make that ask. But, you know, we talk about it, and so we have pretty high confidence that we can pull this off with with donors. The interest levels that we get is is pretty high, so.
At this point, we're holding off on our capital campaign until we have something a little more concrete.
Yeah. If everything went really well, big statement, you know, possibly this could could have an opening at around this time in two thousand twenty-five. But, you know, we all know that's that's a very subjective statement, you know, but we'll see how it goes.
We feel we'll have the restoration done by fall of twenty twenty-four, so.
And we will have it operating somewhere, you know, maybe not permanently. You can always put it back up and take it back down. You know, for a while, just as a quick, I know it's getting late here, but for a while, I thought we would just restore and use it as a traveling carousel, and Betty said, well, let me know how that thought goes once you put it up once.
Yeah.
But, you know, the the NCA is planning to come through Sandpoint in twenty-four.
Twenty-five. They changed.
Oh, twenty-five.
Yeah, the National Carousel Association does a convention every year, and they choose a different location each year. They had planned on coming here in two thousand twenty-four. And some of it, because of conversation that they had with us and us not really being sure whether we'd be ready in two thousand twenty-four, they changed it. So they'll be in the Pacific Northwest in two thousand twenty-five. It brings a huge group of people to the area.
So it gives us the goal twenty twenty-five, but the, you know, we'll at least have a carousel restoration done.
And you, do you track those hours? I mean, so you know they're ten thousand?
We, we do keep track of the hours. It's it's a lot of different timesheets that we have yet to put into the spreadsheet, so.
You know, you can monetize that, right? The independent sector is twenty-nine ninety-five per hour, and so that's almost three hundred thousand dollars right there.
Right.
Some grants might take as cash match.
Another fun project, Wendy Ald at the high school is going to, her honor students this year are gonna take all those hours for me and put them into a spreadsheet so that we've got something a little more cohesive. I'm not good at keeping those records. I think they're great about coming in, and we have a sign up, but it's, I'm not great about getting all that information into a computer.
Some of them don't bother anymore. We have, we have quite a few people that have over a thousand hours in this project.
Nice.
It's it's really dynamic proof.
Then I will have to personally thank you for putting my son to work. She's in Wendy's class.
Oh, great.
Mr. Mayor, Clay and Reno, thank you so much for your commitment. I see Jan and Mike back here as well, all of your volunteers, the time that you've put in. Very rarely, I think, does a city get an opportunity to, like this, come about, and the participation from the community has been amazing. And maybe Jennifer, you can help with this here. Can we get some sort of idea of timeframe, not necessarily in months, but what we're dealing with to move this forward? So right now, as I understand it, there's some surveying that needs to be done on that site. And then Idaho Transportation Department would then work out a deal with the city to give us that property?
Correct. So the property transfer didn't occur as was contemplated and was part of the agreement when the byway was constructed. So in order to speed up that process, actually, the city side with staff and expenses, we've paid for that survey and been coordinating normally. It arguably should be the responsibility of ITD. But they're busy with projects too, and so to get that moving, we've been in the hopper for for the survey. It's in process. We expect it will be completed probably in the next thirty days, and we put staff time towards it and paid the expenses for the survey. Following that, we expect it to work its way through ITD. So sometime next spring, we anticipate we'll see the the deed transfer and any associated information that we need to have with that from from ITD, including any land restrictions, setbacks, things like that, that we'll need to go through their legal counsel. We've been working closely with ITD on this process. We've been in conversations with them, I believe, since late last summer about getting this moving, and I know our latest conversation with ITD was just this week. So this is not for a lack of trying by staff at either agencies to get this moving on. We've just been in the process with the hopper coming to council. And so once we have that, that will start to inform again our ability and any restrictions for the use of that land and gives us an opportunity to clarify any restrictions with that as well. We had heard some conversations with ITD about potentially restrictions with that deed relative to commercial use for that land. I've had conversations with them that the carousel, and specifically the carousel, not broader uses, with that being part of recreation and park system, and I feel pretty confident that we can get that addressed when we start talking about broader uses at that site. I think, again, that will have to be a conversation that we'll have to have with ITD and work through with clarification. We've also had a meeting with Clay and Reno and and members of the Carousel Board in the last couple of weeks, and Don Stastny, relative to the downtown waterfront competition. Again, with moving forward our designs, to be clear on that, Sand Creek site, there was, it was identified as a site, potential site for the carousel that became the preferred site. But there's also other amenities there at that site that were intended to be city amenities, city construction. So balancing that and what portion of that site would be the land lease for the carousel and what portion for other recreational uses as we move forward with the concepts as part of this downtown competition, that will, that will inform those processes as well. So if you look at that, that, that site and the concept plan, that's part of our adopted Parks and Recreation Master Plan, again, reminder to council, we've got connectivity, ordwalk connectivity anticipated there, connecting Sand Creek to City Beach. And so that was a component there, as well as a non-motorized launch down there at that site too, and where that has become kind of increasingly important as a location for that non-motorized launch is, as we're aware of, property exchanges and development to occur there along Farman's Landing. And we saw this, council saw this when we did that tour down there at Farman's Landing. Under our current code, it requires building to the zero-zot line. And with that, that access to our current kayak launch down there, we're gonna have to remove that. That access will not be able to be maintained the way that that is configured. So we're gonna have to have another location, and then too, with non-motorized launch, that ability to access that with vehicles, so you can unload your your kayak or your paddleboard or your canoe or whatever you're using. We have the parking lot over in the other area, but along that Farman's Landing area, it's anticipated we will not have parking there. So those are the kinds of things that will get vetted through the downtown waterfront competition, and that will also inform on design standards likely for downtown and most certainly for city-owned properties. So that too will inform elements of any type of a lease or construction, whether it's done on the city side or through a public-private partnership and a a lease on that site there. So the downtown waterfront competition, we are scheduled right now for that master, that competition manual to come to council for review and consideration to put out for potential bidders in January. We have that scheduled for your January fourth council meeting, and that's anticipated to last through that competition period through the end of June. So we're not talking a process that we expect to take multitude of years. We're trying to move that along as well. And again, the purpose of that competition, going back to kind of that point that we had from Chris Sajas earlier tonight about the importance of urban design and and really that master planning particularly in our downtown and ensuring that we have a good design and responding again to council feedback that you all have had, and we've had through planning and zoning from the public relative to concern about designs that fit in with the historical character and charm of downtown. So we've got multiple pieces moving, but again, property transfer will be key, number one, and we're continuing to try to move this forward as quickly as we can. But there's a lot of elements that we're balancing, but we feel confident that we can be before council with something moving forward into mid-year next year at the latest.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Reno. Thank you, Jennifer.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The final item under Old Business this evening is a proposed memorandum of understanding with Bonner County for addressing and road naming services. And now you have the floor to City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
I don't have so much of a presentation on this item. We didn't get, but I am available to entertain any questions that council may have on this. And I believe our building official, Christine, who knows much more than I do on this is in the back of the room. So currently, as per our current addressing policy, and Christine, maybe if you want to come up, if there's, there's any questions, we are doing intake for addressing. The actual addressing decisions and approvals are ultimately made by Bonner County, who's responsible for dispatch and of our emergency services and compliance with Mena standards for addressing for emergency responses. So this would move the intake, payment of fees, the going out and doing GIS coordinates, getting those input into the system over to Bonner County and create a more efficient process than what we have currently. Have I missed anything, Christine, that?
No.
Christine's the one that this gets, obviously, with building permits coming through. They go through Christine and and Pete and her group. And so coordination with Bonner County is occurring in our building services.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. When I read through it, it really was just a matter of efficiency, because I read through it and thought, well, that's exactly what should be happening. Why are we putting the city in the middle of it? And so, yeah, I don't have any questions, but.
I can, I completely agree. So the, there are no changes at all to the process of how addresses are assigned. We're merely trying to streamline the process and take care of the kind of double handling of applications and double handling of inputting of information, because that's really not helping anyone. It's not speeding up the process. It's just slowing it down.
Any other questions, council? All right. Thank you, Christine. Appreciate it. Thank you, Jennifer. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter, Madam Clerk?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Not, I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution for memorandum of understanding with Bonner County for addressing and road naming services. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes. My brain's not working. I was thinking about something else.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Booker?
Yes.
Counselor Spuro?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Approval of this MOU necessitates some amendments to Sandpoint City Code, Chapter Seven, Title Four, pertaining to road naming and addressing. Reflect that road naming and addressing within the city is administered. Reflect that road naming and addressing within the city is administered by Bonner County. And that the city has the option of naming an agency to implement the process of road name and address assignments. That the county will supply municipal addressing and road naming services to the city and granting the Bonner County Address Administrator Authority to provide addressing and road naming support within the city boundaries. I will now read the title of the ordinance as follows. In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Sandpoint City Code Title Seven, Chapter Four, Road Naming and Addressing, Providing for Repeal and Severability and Providing for Publication and an Effective Date. I'd entertain a motion that the ordinance pass its first reading by title only and that the summary is approved. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. This will be a recall vote.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes. The ordinance has passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once in the ordinance's entirety, be suspended. And that the ordinance passes second and third readings under suspension of the rules. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
The motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of the rules. Finally, approval of the MOU also necessitates some amendments to the city's road naming and addressing policy to replace reference to the city with Bonner County GIS in several instances within the policy. I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution for road naming and addressing policy amendments. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Is, is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. And the final item on the agenda this evening is council consideration to apply for a grant in support of the Panada Theater Roof Project. I will now yield the floor to city arts and historic preservation officer Heather Upton.
Good evening. Can everybody here and see me okay?
We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
Okay, I seem to be having a little moment with my computer. So let me go ahead and try to dial in another way. Okay. Excuse me for one moment. So sorry. Well, Jennifer, could you pull up my PowerPoint by chance or Melissa, please? I'm so sorry about the technical.
Did you try pulling up the PowerPoint, Heather? We might not be able to see you, but we can pull up your.
Perfect.
Pull up your PowerPoint and if can't, if you can't, I'm getting into it right now. It looks like you're.
Yeah, we, we got it.
Fantastic. So sorry about that. Well, I am, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. And I'm looking forward to sharing with you a concern that's happening in our community. The Panada needs a new roof. The current roof on the Panada is over thirty-seven years old. It's been patched, limped along, and it's finally reached the end of its life. In fact, it can no longer be insured. The leaks from the roof have created puddles on the theater floor and likely to compromise a restored ceiling and many of the original vintage fixtures. On the project, the Panada has done a great job researching the best way to approach getting the roof fixed. They have Shannon Sardell of Four Five Architecture LLC. She's the consultant and Fisher Roofing will be the contractor. And they have a bid for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to completely remove the roof, install a new roof with all the appropriate flashing gutter system and proper insulation and so forth. And they, the Panada has done an amazing job of fundraising. It's been such a pleasure working with their team. They've been able to procure over eighty-nine thousand dollars for this specific project. But they're still in need of forty-one thousand dollars to complete the roof. And the Panada has approached the city of Sandpoint to apply on their behalf for the Idaho Gem Grant. And they are asking for forty-one thousand dollars from the Idaho Gem Grant. A little bit of history on the Gem Grant. It's from the Idaho Congress. And it's created to help small communities improve infrastructure, remediate light conditions and create economic development opportunities. And eligible entities or communities with populations of ten thousand or less. And one of the caveats of applying for this grant, it has to be submitted by city, county or tribal government. And the timing of this grant aligns with the immediate need of a new roof for the Panada Theater. The Panada has served as an important arts anchor in the community since nineteen twenty-seven. It's on our national registry. And it's in our historic district. It's a very significant cultural and economic cornerstone to Sandpoint. I know we all have memories that are captured in that beautiful building. And in addition to what the Panada brings to our community, it's also heated on two of our goals that are adopted in the Arts Culture Historic Preservation Master Plan. Goal number five is to support Sandpoint's economic development through arts and culture. And goal number six, let me flip through that, sorry, is to integrate and promote historic preservation as a tool for achieving economic vitality. Excuse me, I'm just going to go to this last screen here. My computer is haunting me at the moment. I apologize for the technical difficulty. So by, by recommend, the recommendation to allow staff to apply on behalf of the Panada Theater for the Idaho Gem Grant for forty-one thousand dollars would definitely be helping us achieve many of our goals that are set forth in the Arts Culture and Historic Master Plan. Does anybody have any questions?
No questions. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there anyone that would like to comment on this matter?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, entertain a motion to approve the resolution for Idaho Gem Grant Program Application for Pass Through Funds in Support of the Panada Theater Roof Project Replacement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Rule?
Yes.
Counselor McAllister?
Yes.
Counselor Spurrow?
Yes.
Counselor Dick?
Yes.
Motion passes. And with that, this meeting is adjourned at eight twenty-nine. Thanks, everybody, for your participation.
Good night, folks.